Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for December 2nd. If we could all stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence.
And Chair, I'll move that we adopt the agenda. I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
No addendum items?
No. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Moving into presentations, School Superintendent, Dr. Grimsley.
Hello. Good afternoon from your friends at RCPS. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. As the holiday season continues, I'm pleased to share some of the incredible highlights since my last report. We're proud to announce that our division has been selected to join the 2024-2025 Virginia School Recipe Development Team. Partnering with 12 other school divisions, we will develop and implement innovative recipes featuring Virginia-grown fruits and vegetables. This initiative highlights our commitment to enhancing nutrition in our schools through scratch-based cooking and farm-to-table enrichment. On November 21st, RCHS hosted the 16th Annual Bounty From the County Celebration, a much-loved tradition led by Mr. Hogan. Students harvested, procured, and prepared a locally sourced banquet featuring wild game, fish, venison, quail, rabbit, settles beef, casseroles, and baked goods. This celebration showcases the beauty of our local resources and the collaborative spirit of our students and staff. Also, on November 21st, RCPS staff gathered for the annual Staff Farmers Market hosted by Commit to Be Fit. Each staff member received $40 in tickets to spend on fresh, local goods, including meats, vegetables, breads, jams, and more. Thanks to a staff wellness grant, every employee also received a frozen turkey to enjoy over the holiday. A special thank you to our participating vendors, Bean Hollow, Grass Fed, Fair Winds Farm, Sunshine Acres Farm, Jackalope Bridge Bakehouse and Micro Farm, Gardens of Met, and Roger Jenkins Fruit Stand. Events like these celebrate our connection to local agriculture while showing appreciation for our hard-working staff. Some beautiful student artwork was displayed in the main gallery during last month's art tour, including the "Where I'm From" collage art quilt from RCES students combining a study of personal identity and the study of poetry to create a design of their own lived experiences. And a beautiful piece by the RCHS students entitled "The Bigger Picture," where each student represented what makes them feel like a part of their community, and then they all combined to fit together like a puzzle to create the bigger picture. Our fall sports season concluded with state playoff appearances in volleyball, cross-country, golf, and competition cheer. A standout achievement was the Varsity Boys Cross Country Team placing fifth in the Virginia Tech Cross Country Course in Blacksburg, a tremendous leap from their 12th place finished three years ago. Winter sports are underway with our Scholastic Bowl team already earning victories over Strasburg. We are making significant progress in our SIFT fundraiser campaign with, at this point, half the funds raised to secure a lobbyist to advocate for removing the funding cap. To donate, you can visit the Headwaters Foundation website and select SIFT Fundraiser under Gift designation. Donors can also download an I-donated digital badge from our SIFT fundraiser page. Thank you for your continued support of this vital initiative. November was a month that truly showcased the strength of our schools and community. It is the season of gratitude, and we are truly grateful to everyone who contributes to the success and well-being of our students and staff every day. So, thank you so much for your support.
Hi, Dr. Grimsley. Happy Thanksgiving. Hope you had a good one.
Thank you.
A few months ago, I did ask, in the context of a discussion about staff turnover for some financial analysis, and I think Ms. Witt is here today, so maybe it's good that she can hear this request again.
Sure.
But what I would like to see is the bottom-line salary impact of the staff that turned over. So, I would like to see a list of those positions that were vacated either as of the end of the last academic year during the summertime.
Yep.
And then see what those salaries were, salaries and benefits were at that time for those positions. And then, which I assume not all positions were filled, but most were.
Mm-hmm.
Then I would like to see a comparative analysis of what you're paying the replacements for those positions. The idea being that we can talk about the adverse effect of staff turnover on the quality of education, but obviously, there's also a fiscal effect.
Certainly, yeah.
Which I would like to capture.
Mm-hmm.
And I might have follow-up requests, but I would like to see that, especially now that we're getting close to the budget season.
And that will be definitely a big part of our budget reporting and also on those questions, hopefully, that we keep accumulating on the website.
Right.
But we did prepare that initially after you had asked for it, but we just didn't have a chance to collaborate on.
Okay.
But we do have a lot of information regarding that.
Thank you. And then, the other thing I want to raise with you, and I'm sure you can anticipate this, the SIFT fundraising effort, and I, first of all, want to say how grateful I am to our very generous community.
Yeah.
Which is, it always astounds me how people step up, and I think we all are grateful for that, whether it's support for a broadband project or for something like, you know, turning the tide at the state regarding our cap on state funding. I do want to ask, let me say this. One pet peeve I have is when somebody says to me, "Maybe I'm missing something," but it's a disguised way of saying, "I haven't missed anything, but I don't like what I'm seeing." And they soft-pedal by saying, "Maybe I'm missing something." So, to lead into my own pet peeve, "Maybe I'm missing something." But we, I, to you privately suggested a couple of years ago that sometimes you need to spend money to make money. And we have had this ongoing effort at this stage trying to free up funds. And three years running at least, we've been put in a real bind where we're faced with, I think at one point, it was a half-million-dollar budget deficit. And we scramble, and we scrimp, and I'm looking here at our Audit Financial State, which has a summary of property tax rates. And in fact, property tax rates continue to be pretty steady because frankly, members of this board, receiving what we receive from you all, have tried really hard to cover that deficit in any way possible short of a property tax increase. And I know that you rightfully point out that property tax increases are hard on your own school community, not only the people who are on your staff, but the students and the families who attend your schools.
Absolutely, yes.
So, it's something that we all like to avoid to the extent possible. Again, I appreciate all of the community's support for this fundraising effort. What I must be missing is why, with the urgency to turn the tide at the state, would we engage in a potentially protracted fundraising effort when I think that I made very clear when we provided the initial funding from the Rappahannock County taxpayers through this board the last time? I've made pretty clear that if you got through the first phase of this lobbying effort, just come back and let us know how it's going and ask for additional funds. And when I look at this ongoing fundraising effort, and I think about the urgency with which we're trying to affect a significant change at the state level, there's a real disconnect there. In other words, I feel like each year, for three years, we've been burdened with a deficit coming out of the schools that we've scrambled to cover. And now, push comes to shove, thankfully, you've engaged lobbyists, which I think, I mean, I think is a great move. I would much rather you come to us and you ask for additional support so that we can keep the momentum going. Because I feel like now we're in a protracted fundraising process that potentially delays the effectiveness of the lobbying effort in Richmond, which frankly, we need to wrap up to the extent possible, as soon as possible, preferably before we end up in another budget discussion facing a big deficit. So, I just want to understand how you explain that we ended up going this community fundraising route when I feel like we tried to be pretty supportive, especially with the idea that a small amount of money for lobbyists could potentially save Rappahannock County taxpayers a property tax increase. And that's the urgency that I feel like is lacking in this process. And to wrap it up, maybe I am missing something, and I would appreciate your explanation.
I appreciate that. I was going to go back to, maybe we're missing something. I think there must be something we're missing because, yes, initially, when we had these discussions from the SIFT original recommendations, there were a two-phased approach to getting, engaging with a lobbyist. And we did have quite a few folks from the community saying, "I want to help. I want to understand this. We want to engage." So, it was really understanding that, yes, by when the time came to the point of go-no-go, we would have to come back and have a discussion with the school board and supervisors to say, "This is what's left."
Okay.
But the idea was to engage the community around that is very interested and fascinated and want to help with this initiative. And that had been in the initial resolution that you all signed to do that. So, that was the direction that we were going, so. And I think it's been very successful. We've already raised half the funds, so we're almost there.
But is this...
Ahead of schedule. It's not holding up anything.
Okay, that's my key question.
Yes, sir. No, it's not.
Okay. So, has the lobbyists that you hired met all of the benchmarks that you established in terms of a timeline so far?
Absolutely.
And this fundraising effort, just to confirm, is not slowing us down?
Not at all. Because by December, the end of December, before session starts, Phase 1 would be complete, at which point in time she would recommend to us a go-no-go.
Okay.
Like, it doesn't have a shot. Let's not go further. No more money needs to be raised. However, if it does, let's continue. And then, that's the remaining $30,000.
Okay. In fact, I was missing something. I apologize.
That's okay.
And I'm grateful for your explanation.
I appreciate it.
And again, thank you to our community members for their help.
Absolutely.
But I do hope that you understand the urgency, I feel, to push as hard as possible.
Yes.
Because when we're talking about another $30,000 to offset or potentially eliminate
$1.3 million.
A two-penny increase on the property tax rate.
For sure.
You can understand why I kind of want to just get things done.
I appreciate that. I really do. And I know the community does as well. And that's when we're budgeting, and you know this from our development process, you know, I don't want it to feel like it's a mad scramble or...
Correct.
You know, you do know that we project everything based on the most current information that we have from the government at the time, which can change drastically from the governor's mansion to General Assembly and each session and committee in between. So, as soon as we know that, we put that in front of you, so.
Well, I'm not holding my breath in that regard because it never seems, nothing ever seems to change. So, hopefully, this will make a difference, and I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What I've seen in our meetings, the SIFT meetings, is that people wanted this to, we wanted to show to Richmond that we're in this together.
Absolutely.
And the entire county is willing to put up even a little bit to get us over the hill to the $1.3, that, you know, everybody will climb that one, I think, and do it together. And we're seeing that, which is pretty exciting. And I know through emails, we've had conversation about, "So, you get this $1.3, but you've been paying your bills now, so what are you going to do with the $1.3?" I think that's a good conversation to have right now as well.
Absolutely. So, there's, when we do receive that additional state money, there's, during budget process, we'll have to see what the state is going to demand of us, first of all. There are a lot of investments being made in the J-Lark recommendations report. In fact, I think I saw a budget slide from the state that said about $75 million being recommended to go right into just that pot. But how that looks for Rappahannock is very different than it may look to a neighboring district with the local composite index the way it is. So, there will be different demands from the state we'll have to deal with and grapple with. We don't yet know. Capital improvement's always the biggie. We have deferred purchases on our buses. We know we have to deal with those one-time purchases. We now know that our elementary roof is in worse condition than what we had originally thought, and after Helene, that really proved something that we need to be looking at sooner rather than later. So, capital needs is probably going to be the main issue, plus the recommendations from the state. So, we don't yet know, but those are things that we'll talk about very transparently with you all, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for recapping that, Shannon. That was my recollection is that Headwaters had stepped up and said that they would be on the hook for the $30,000. But I don't remember it being described as a fundraising effort, but, I mean, I think that is a beneficial way forward. And I just have to say, I did hear from people that had resistance to hiring a lobbyist because it's not something that Rappahannock has traditionally done, and there's no guaranteed payoff. I think we all, if we knew we could spend $30,000 and save $1.3 million, that's a no-brainer. Everybody hates that word, right? But it is a gamble, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, I'm not convinced that anything will change until the players in Richmond change. And we don't have any control over that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Company 4 update.
In November, we had 16 EMS calls. We got out on 13 of them, and we had two transports. We had seven fire calls and got out on six of them. A little bit of additional information, two additional drivers were released to drive the ambulance this month. One paramedic has been released by the Office of the Medical Director. And we're in the process of working with the county and upgrading the ambulance to an ALS unit so that paramedic can function at the level to which she's licensed and trained. We do now have a quick-response vehicle through a grant from the Loeb Foundation, and it's in the process of being fitted and getting it in service. Once in service, it will allow released EMS providers to take the unit home and allow for a quicker response time and have a provider on scene earlier to take care of people. Year-to-date staffing hours were 2,024 out of a total number of hours, staffing and calls of 6,024. This is my semi-final appearance before you. We have one more to go before our appointment runs out. Always happy to come back if summoned, or invited, needn't be that formal. But if you'll hear it, I would like to offer, at our next and last report, a bit of a summary of what we've done over the time since you first appointed us. And so, if there's anything you want to know, you want me to research and have ready for you at that time, please let us know, and we will do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Questions?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Dr. Hill. It's really comforting to have you at the helm, and we're grateful that you bring your professional experience to bear on our county and public safety. Earlier this fall, through the Public Safety Committee, we put forward five offers of support to the volunteer fire, primarily the EMS companies in the county. And I just want to go through those five and would like to hear from you of those five offers. Taking the rapid-response vehicle off the table, congratulations on the funding that I think is a critical, a critical piece of equipment that should help you reduce response times in your first-due area. But I do want to go through these five items, and if you just tell me your thinking on each one and to what extent Company 4 will take advantage of these offers from the county government. The first one, obviously, is the change in the protocols for managing pharmaceuticals, and that came down from the state. And I know you're an emergency physician, and so you understand quite well the challenges on that front. And one of the offers that the county government made in this regard was to do centralized management of pharmaceuticals, to take pressure off of our volunteers. The second one was, to the extent that any EMS company has gaps in its volunteer schedule following the model used both in Chester Gap and at Company 7 in Sperryville, we also offered to expand our paid paramedic roster to fill any gaps in the company's schedules that might exist where paid personnel might help you all cover more of the day for response purposes. The third area is centralized scheduling, and it's something we really want to encourage. And I wonder where Company 4 stands on participating in centralized scheduling of your first responders. Rapid Response Vehicle, again, congratulations. That's another thing that we at least have offered, potentially, to fund for our volunteer EMS agencies. And then, finally, New Generation Life Packs. So, those five offers of support from the county with the goal of strengthening the ability of our volunteer companies to respond more quickly to EMS emergencies, I just wonder where you stand in each of those.
Hearsay tells me that some of the companies are not at all interested in centralized drug purchasing.
Okay.
We are talking with Sperryville. We've had a lot of help from Darren to try to work with them to find a place. And Rapid Home actually has been involved with trying to get a pharmacy to come in for other purposes, and so we're trying to coordinate that with them. We might be able to use some of the same people and depositories. So, we're eager to do that, acknowledge the savings that's involved. I think we know that we're going to have a lot of drugs that are going to expire.
Correct.
Because we don't, thanks God, get that many calls. So, it does mean that the easy swap-out at the emergency rooms was great for a while, but we're going to have to do something different, as you know. We are so excited with all the volunteers and people that we have signing up. We are not, at the present time, asking for an expanded paid personnel at our station in particular. We'd like to keep that in our back pocket, and if we need it, come back and say, "Please reconsider." But at this point, we're not asking for that. Centralized scheduling, we've talked about it. It's kind of like the response to the drugs. We don't know that we're going to get a lot of interest in that from some of the other companies. But we're not opposed to coordinating with one or two. I think this is something that the Board of Directors has to... Vehicle you mentioned and the life packs, we jumped on that in a hot minute, and we're very, very grateful for that, very excited. These things are really cool. They allow you, just very simply, to continue CPR without stopping for a pulse check. They filter out road noise so they can give you a reading as to what's going on with the heart rhythm while you're rolling. They are just, they're real special. They're small, they're light. We're going to do good with them.
Great. That's really exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
At this time, on presentations, we have the Food Pantry, Rapid Home, and the Monovalent Fund. I don't know if you all have coordinated how you're going to do this, but come on up in whichever order you would prefer.
I wasn't quite sure what you all were requiring today. I printed out a couple of things, and I'll share those with you. I'm Penny Carter from the Rappahannock Food Pantry. Thank you for logging us. So, we were grateful to move into our new food pantry in June, and that has made a huge impact in our volume. I think being in the central location of the county and having a larger, we went from a 1,200-square-foot facility to 4,500 has made a huge impact in how we provide food to the county. So, if you look at our numbers here, the top three categories is comparing 1222, 123, and 1223. The difference here, and you look at our numbers, was the takeaway of SNAP and COVID in the middle of '23, that we really had a big bump in '23 of our numbers. We ended up in '23, if you look down at the very last line, having almost 10,000 visits at our pantry, and that would have been at our old location. When you look at our lines here in the middle of the page of 2024, what you're looking at is the number of families that come each month, the number of clients that come each month, the total number of family visits. Families can come either twice a month, or if there are families greater than five, they can come three times a month. And then, the final line, excuse me, is the total number of families that we enroll per month. What's really outstanding about this number, if you block off 62024, that number really increases. We added seven, we have a total of 140 new families this year. Seventy-six, almost half of those have been since we opened the new pantry. We have moved our manager, Laura Lucas, to a full-time position, meaning that she's a full-time paid physician. Up until just two months ago, that was our only paid position. We've now put on another part-time position. That's temporary. We're looking at the beginning of January, whether or not we can support that for this coming year. In terms of how we run our pantry, how we function and bring our money in, our annual pantry day dinner is our major fundraiser, and then we'll put out our annual donor letter, actually, this month. Those are our two biggest fundraisers. But our grants, which is your second page there, the 2024, we pulled in almost $150,000 worth of grants. What we do with this is, not only does the grants bring in money, but we use those grants to support any fundraising efforts that we do, that we really take and, I'm using my words here, we market those grants, saying that we have this grant that is putting perishable foods on our shelves, that being a grant that supports milk, bread, milk, eggs, and butter. And so, if people want to donate to that, then they can add to that grant fund. Some of our grants are matching grants. We had a wonderful matching grant from the Mid-Atlantic Farmers Grant Program this year, where we were able to match grants to Sunny, I'm sorry, Waterpenny, and we matched that grant. We got nine CSAs through them. And then, I took the other half of that grant and worked with Rutgers Farm, which does a great program. And that was really great that we were able to help two farmers in our county this year. Some of the other programs that we have this year, the Feminine Care Program, which were one of the few food pantries in the area that will provide feminine care products to our customers, we were able to get $10,000 last year. One of the directors, who actually owns a farm here in the county, although she lives in West Palm Beach, Florida, came through this year. She was very impressed by our program, and we got an additional $5,000 this year. But the most important part is just trying to use the things that we do well and engineer those out to the other people to be able to fund back to that. I think also the fact that we use our local produce for both our produce, vegetables, and fruits, and our meat is very important. We use, a lot of our farmers donate to us. We have the Hunters for Hungry Program that dropped off 390 pounds this past week. We try to purchase from our local farmers as much as possible. We had Waterpenny, Sunnyside, and Fault Care Free Education Farm this past summer that provided excellent produce to us. And we really encourage our clients to use that. We have wonderful volunteers who work with us, who are really good about encouraging the customers to pick and choose wisely. We have over 100 volunteers signed up to work with us. We did a review of our volunteer hours. We have more than 750 hours a month of volunteers that help us. Those are people who go to the grocery store to pick up our food that are donated to us. I'm talking about Food Line and Marshall, Wegmans, Trader Joe's, you know, we've added a couple more. We're adding Giant and Warrenton right now. People that do deliveries to homes, the people who come in the morning that fill the shelves, the people who come in the afternoon to shop with our volunteers, the people who help us do our fundraisers. It's an incredible team effort to do the things that we do, and I could not stand here if I didn't have a team to support me to do that. So, thank you for your support, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
What additional support can we provide as we're entering the budget season, et cetera? I mean, what do you need this board to do on behalf of county taxpayers to support your ongoing initiatives?
You know, I had a great experience being asked to speak at the Roundtable in, I guess it was that September or October, and the opportunity to maybe work together with the other nonprofits to look at broader statewide grants that we can apply to. You know, we can only pick at the same bucket so many times for donor money, but I think there's the opportunity to look further for other state-supported grants. I'm somewhat limited to, I got this done this year, but looking at other, maybe looking at working together in terms of grant writing within ourselves, or looking at grant writing within the county supporting... Um, you know, I, I had a great experience being asked to speak at the roundtable in, I guess it was that September or October, and the opportunity to maybe work together with the other nonprofits to look at broader statewide grants that we can apply to. You know, we can only pick at the same bucket so many times for donor money, but I think there's the opportunity to look further for other state-supported grants. I'm somewhat limited to, I got this done this year, but looking at other, maybe looking at, working together in terms of grant writing within ourselves, or looking at grant writing within the county, supporting that would be very helpful. They're definitely out there, we just need some support to be able to do that. And I think my partners would agree that we would welcome any help in terms of looking towards our, our delegates and senators to be able to, you know, Senator Keen and things, to look at, see what money is available to us. We're all, we're really worried in terms of getting ready to write our budget. Usually we're looking at food prices, money that we have to support the pantry of being around $400,000 a year. We're definitely thinking that that's going to be a lot more next year, especially with the increase of our client numbers. So we have to prepare for that and the only way we're going to be able to do that is looking for funds outside of the county to do that.
Thanks.
Anybody that needs your assistance, is there a website or a phone number we can say on the air so that we've got it on you too?
You know, we have, we have the food pantry website out, we have our van running around. You can certainly support that. We really take almost anyone who needs to come into the food pantry. I think we work really well with our other nonprofits to be able to get people out. What we see a lot is that families come and they are, especially in our new site, they're bringing their friends at the same time because I think this food pantry is so, and we're so blessed that, that the people ahead of me supported this initiative to, to get us where we are today. And it's, it's, it's a place that provides dignity and space for the people to shop. So, so often we'll have somebody one week and they'll bring their friend the next week and we're seeing more and more of that. And it's not, I see, and again, you all know that I'm a native, I see the people that worked with my mother from Eileen, so I see the elderly population. I see, it's the working poor who come in. It's the family who live together. I have one couple who has their father living with them. The couples are, they're in their 60s, they also have their son and daughter and their three children, so it's a family of seven and they're in the same home. So I can hold my other soapbox, but, so you know, we're seeing families that are generational that are living together that come to the pantry. So it's, it's a multitude of problems of people who, so again, I look to my resources to help. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Really good, thank you.
Hope you feel better.
I do have some papers I'd like to share with the board.
Hi, I'm Victoria Lying, I'm the Executive Director of Rapid Home. I hope everybody enjoyed their holiday season and as we're moving into it. I actually just gave you a paper that's a kind of a one overview of where Rapid Home stands right now. We currently have 700 members, that's 30% of your 60 and over population. We are a non-fee-based village. We are funded through grants and donations. We, the whole idea behind the village model is neighbor helping neighbor and what we are doing is we are reaching to provide wraparound services for our 50 and over community. Transportation is one of our largest programs. We currently have provided 618 rides through October, that is more than the rides that we provided last year. We have had 208 social activities and our Ready or Not program has been attended by 130 participants. Our volunteers so far have responded to 500 service requests. These requests have included grocery and prescription pickup, friendly visitors, wrap at the door, loan closet in partnership with the Lions Club, guardian alerts, which we're handing out like candy, those are the buttons you press like help, I can't get up. We now have both wired and wireless because sometimes our wired phones don't work as well as they should in Rappahannock County. I'm sure nobody has that issue but me. Reflective signs that we work with in partnership with the Castleton Fire Department, Home Safe Home, which is a new program, we got a grant from the electric company in partnership with the benevolent fund, yard work, trash pickup, vendor referrals, and caregiver referrals. We're also currently doing a couple of new programs. One is, I'm sure you guys have seen this car wandering around, it's called Wrap Connect. It was a service that was provided, notice the word was, provided by the state of Virginia. They're no longer doing it. So we are working with partnership with the Regional Transportation Collaborative to pick up the driver. What we can't do obviously is pick up the car. So we are in the process of looking for another vehicle for this driver because the only vehicle we have available is our wheelchair van. He will, it is a three-day program from 8:30 to 4:30 on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. This paid driver will help us continue our transportation program. You can't always find people that volunteers to be able to take people at the drop of a hat, and a lot of, sometimes it does happen at the drop of a hat, to a medical appointment or where they may need to go. In July of this year, Rapid Home was awarded 100,000 grant from the Health Resource and Services Administration. The goal for this grant is the development of the Rappahannock Rural Health Network for the improvement of access to healthcare in our region. Since the award of the grant, Rapid Home has established a consortium of more of a dozen, excuse me, organizations and individuals, including UVA and Valley Health, to explore ways to expand the access to healthcare in the county. And we're just not talking about the elderly, we're talking about healthcare in the county. The proposed solution includes working with the county school system to increase access to the high school clinic, to include members of the public as a pilot program, providing additional training and resources to EMS to provide quality of life care and health monitoring in the community to reduce hospital visits, increase access to healthcare professionals via telemedicine options, providing support to physicians interested in opening new practices in the county, and working with the regional healthcare providers to expand their services into Rappahannock County. Everything we do at Rapid Home is to enhance the life of our seniors. Anything from changing a light bulb to taking somebody to a medical appointment. It basically, we did the math and it costs us about $500 a year for every senior that we reach out to and help. We are honored to be able to do this work and supply those Rapid Home services, but we are in need of volunteers that are much younger than we are. There are, don't you be laughing. There are some volunteers that I would not want to get up on a ladder, although they would love to be able to help. So as new, as new families are moving into the county, we are reaching out in hopes that maybe there's a stay-at-home mom or dad or two that can give us a hand. I have pressured one young son into doing many things that he's not too thrilled about, but you know, hey. And I, I just want to say the healthcare initiative to us is incredibly important, but the Wrap Connect one is almost more important at this point. Without Wrap Connect, they did 42% of our rides so far this year. That is huge, which is why we're taking over this program, which means we're taking a hit to our budget to continue to supply this particular resource to the county. Questions?
Victoria, I, I love your organization and I really, really appreciate our recent conversation about areas where our county fire and rescue department, through our dispatchers could provide some support to Rapid Home in a couple of ways. And I was wondering if you, just for the benefit of the public, if, if you could just articulate a couple of things that we talked about.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I think these are, this to me is really impressive that your organization and the people involved in it are thinking ahead. How do we, how do we keep our seniors safe and how do we do it in a cost-effective way? And I just thought what you raised with me was really important.
Well, it's one of the, as you know, every year, all the nonprofits put together a strategic plan, a five-year strategic plan. And every month before I go into the board meeting, I actually review that plan to see where we are and whether we're on target or not. And one of the glaring issues for me over the last few months and what has been keeping me up is kind of our emergency response for our seniors. And because we don't really have a way to map who's in a wheelchair, who uses a cane, who is bedridden and, and can't move, and how do we get to those people and move those people in a timely manner should there be a national disaster? And believe it or not, that kind of stuff really does keep me up at night. And it's, it's, it really, it's, we are working hard at seeing what we can do. I mean, that's not really part of the health initiative, that really is an emergency response. Whether we can have a mapping of where these people are and what their disabilities may be, I think would be critically important, especially if we're having floods or if something is happening where people can't stay in their homes because they need oxygen, so without electricity, they can't breathe. How do we make sure that we can get to the people that we need to get to that are disabled and get them to safety before it becomes a crisis? And Karen was very, humored me and came over to the office and talked with me about this, which I think is critically important. And I know you guys are working hard with the EMS, as are we to some degree, to get, to get some of these things in order, but these are the things that keep us, these are the things that keep the people at Rapid Home awake. We are literally, I would say, devoted to the elderly and community here and that is our focus. So whatever help or ideas you can suggest, we are open to. And blatant plug here, if you want to know what you can do for Rapid Home right now, we need a minivan because without getting some type of additional car to keep Wrap Connect in service, they do have to use my wheelchair van, which takes my wheelchair van out of service for somebody who indeed might need it. So, you know, four years old, I'm Karen Holt, four tires and runs. Canaps whirls under the hood as far as I'm concerned. So, any other questions? Karen, did that answer your question sufficiently?
Yeah, Darren Stevens is here, so I also wanted him to hear that. And I saw him taking notes, so sometimes you gotta have meetings like this just to kind of get stuff going.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I'll just remind all of our groups here, especially while Dr. Brooksley and Miss Whit are both here, are lots of our, our athletic teams at the high school, they engage in, in some community services. Part of our athletic, the athletic director there really encourages team building and sense of community. So I would always put it like a sticky note somewhere, call the school, my son just did a community outreach thing with the basketball team, I think two weeks, two weeks ago. So while they might not be at the ready, I would definitely, when you have the yard work stuff for, for those folks.
And, and we are grateful to the school because we do reach out. Of course, there are some certain restrictions there because if they're under 18, they have to be supervised by an adult and sometimes finding an adult can be hard to, to muster up. But you're absolutely right and my godson had recently moved in with us and he is actually a volunteer at the food pantry. Not that his grandfather had ever had anything to do with the food pantry, but I completely agree. And I know that when my kids were in school, that community service was actually something that was almost a program that they had to perform. So I think there's got to be a way that we can work it so that some of these younger kids who can get up on ladders and can screw in light bulbs, we can find a way for an adult to help them. I mean, I had a lady call this morning because she needs her trash taken to the landfill because her car isn't working. I don't have a lot of people that can, except for one young son who's now just waiting to the landfill, to, to be able to do that type of thing. And I appreciate you bringing that up because I think it's really important. And I think it's really important that our young people know and understand how much history actually exists in this county through the, the people that have lived here and were born here. And I don't want that to get lost and sometimes I actually feel it slipping away. And I think it's vitally important that we keep it here.
Yeah. Maybe make a list. We keep it on court.
You're welcome.
They have a list.
Yeah. Really appreciate it, thank you very much. Well, thank you.
Very good. [inaudible]
Oh, I have some. Yes. Hi, I'm Bernie Olson from the Rappahannock Benevolent Fund. And first of all, I want to say to the board, thank you very much. In the five years I've been in this job, we've never been asked to come and give a report to the county, so I'm really, really pleased that you did because we're the little engine that can and we do a lot of work in this community very quietly because we do it confidential, confidential and we keep that both from our donors and from the people that we work with. So we're kind of quiet in this community, but we do a lot of work. Our main job is to provide emergency and self-sufficiency assistance with compassion and confidentiality to, only to Rappahannock County. So some people, we get calls from outside the county and our bylaws state that we only get money from Rappahannock and we only serve Rappahannock County residents. So it's a little bit of a restriction, but we really keep to that. This past year, we served about 200 people and the trend, I think one of the things you asked about was a trend, and one of our trends is that we now are serving younger people. As you can see, we, between the ages of 18 and 59, this past year, we served 125 people in that age group and over 60 was 76 people. And part of that has changed because when I first came on, we were mostly serving the senior population. And Rapid Home has done such a fabulous job taking on the service to our seniors, as you've just heard. So I think part of this shift is because of Rapid Home and also because the word has gotten out to our younger population that we're here to help them out. Types of assistance that we provide, housing, rent and mortgage, transportation. And I want to tell you, this is the thing I'm the most excited about this year. So all of you know how much it costs to get your cars repaired. So people who are working, you know, the people we serve, their income doesn't go up very much, but the, all of the repairs and car costs have gone, skyrocketed three times. This has really hit our population and so we've really worked hard this past couple of years to provide not only cars, but car repairs for people. And what that means is we, because we help them with their vehicles, they keep working. And this is huge. Yeah, we might put up some good chunk of money, but we know that that's helping those people stay working. So this year, we have helped purchase through purchases and also grants and also donated cars, 12 cars to people this year. And it's really exciting, we just did one last week and somebody saw that we had asked on Facebook about getting cars and we had, I added for it, and she called and she said, "I can't donate it to you, but I can give it to you for a much less price than what I would sell it for regularly." So really exciting, I just find this one of the, it's my, I love that we help people in need, but I also love when we can help people with getting them hand-ups rather than just hand-outs. And that's our whole bridge program that we started two years ago, where we help people with self-sufficiency, moving from crisis, financial crisis, into self-sufficiency. We are currently looking for a person to fill that job, so that would be great if anybody knows about that. We also do, our last program that we do is we do critical home repairs and that's for our low-income people here, anything from roof to ramps, small little things that we do, a lot of heat pumps and a lot of water pumps. You know, a lot of people have wells here, so those water pumps go out and as people age and they, their systems get older, that seems to be one thing that we do a lot of. So as I said, one of the biggest changes- So as I said, one of the biggest changes is we are serving a younger population. Our support comes from, about half of our support comes from you all, people here in the community. About 47% of our money comes from our big fundraiser we have in March and also from our annual appeals. The other half comes from our wonderful grant people, and that's PATH, Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and a couple of other private donations, foundations that we have. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you having us. Any questions?
Bernie, thanks a lot for all you do. And I know that in the not-too-distant past, I rode along with you a couple of times to help someone, which I remember fondly, and I hope we can do more of that. My question, I've never had a really good handle on the financial condition of the Benevolent Fund. I know that you're, you all are very generous. And here, you noted 12-month contribution total of about $310,000. Not asking you to go into any detail, but are you, do you ever find yourselves in a position where you simply cannot provide something to someone in need because you, you lack the cash on hand? Or do you have, do you, year to year, do you maintain a healthy cash balance that allows you to be fairly accommodated with, if requests are within the parameters of what you fund?
Yeah, thanks for that question. You know, we have this amazing, amazing community here. And I started, I started the day COVID started. And it was pretty wild. But we have, when we, when I started, and they offered me the job and they said, oh, we have lots of money in the bank. And I was like, okay. And then I saw it, I was like, cool, okay, we do. Not a lot of money was in the bank, but we spend almost, we use almost every penny that we get every year. Now, we've also been being, we've had some people ask us and say, what are you doing about the future for the organization? And we've put away some money for that as well. But we, other than people who come from outside of the county, we rarely, 99, someone just asked me this question, 99% of the people that come to us, we help them out. Now, there are some people that I have to say to, sorry, you've pastured. We have a limit. We do have a cap on how much we give to people every year. So if people hit that cap, and unless it's an incredible situation, we stick to that cap pretty well. So we help 99% of the people that have come to us. And I think that's a really great reflection of this incredible community that we have here that is so generous and so compassionate towards our other folks in our community.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all three of you coming today. And it's important to remember, volunteerism makes you feel good. So if you haven't volunteered for these organizations or others in the county, we have plenty. There's always something to do. So if you have a little extra time, give it and you'll feel good about doing the volunteer work. I guarantee it.
And the only thing I'd like to add to all three groups, while we, your, your focus is Rapid Hennick County, there are many organizations out there where they serve many others, but Rapid Hennick is included in their service districts. Rapid Hennick is tiny, and sometimes we don't speak up because we're doing such a great job taking care of our own. So what I would say to you, if you have not already connected with the PCR group, the Piedmont Community Resource Group, I would absolutely connect with that group. They meet just once a month. And it is, it's just a giant roundtable of groups, very similar to yours. But you, from Habitat for Humanity to, to, like I said, just other groups.
So I just want to say, there is also the Rapid Hennick Mental Health Roundtable, and that meets once a month, and we meet at the Trinity Church. And so that is the other organizations within Rapid Hennick, but also in our district. I've never heard of the Piedmont group, so I'm curious. I'll be very curious to join with them.
I will send you that contact information. And they are a fabulous group.
We are connected, all these groups are connected. And I also want to tell you, us and Department of Social Services, there is a smaller group, an inter-agency group that meets once a month as well. We meet to talk about what's going on here in the county. So we have been doing that for the last two or three years. And that is fabulous to be able to see our different people that, you know, work and, and help folks here in the county.
It also allows us not to be redundant in our services. So we have the capability to kind of do more with less, as it were.
That's smart. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on into presentations, RCWSA.
Well, first of all, that was fascinating to listen to.
Very good.
And amazing, when I sell property to people, I always tell them the best way to get connected is to join some volunteer groups. And some of them have done so and have done amazing jobs. Anyway, first I want to say thank you to the board. And I have a special thank you to Deborah Nick and Bonnie Jewell, who have done an incredible job with our transition to having proper bookkeeping and people who can answer phones because they're there, sitting there. It's been very, very helpful. I ask my co-chair, Andrew, if he would come up. I have been out of the country, so I didn't feel like I could properly prepare for what you wanted to hear today. So Andrew, we'll talk to you a little bit about it. And again, thank you for doing the support, the resolution. We have our loan, and now we just, you want to hear how we're going to pay it back.
That's right. And I gather the central purpose of this report is to assure the board that our projected EDU rate increases are sufficient to cover the revenues necessary to repay loans. And I have to report that they are. We, and the documents, we can, and I'd be delighted to meet with you, any of you individually to really tell you that. They're stiff, you know? We're not happy about the projected rate increases, but, you know, we've seen all of it.
And one thing, listening to all the other people can get grants. And we, it's very difficult for us to get grants. We will continue to look. And anybody on the board who has a lead on any of that, let me know. Because this won't be the only work that our plant needs. So, any questions for us?
I just, I just had one comment I heard from one citizen, we'll just call it, at the Quickie Mart, which is, well, a lot happens at the Quickie Mart. And that person asked me a reasonable question, and they said, well, the question they asked, once I understood it, was a reasonable question. And it came down to this, is the county really now handling the billing functions for the Rapid Hennick County Water and Sewer Authority? And I said, yes, the county is doing that. And that person expressed concern that, you mean, we're using Rapid Hennick County, hear me out, Sherry, I know you're just like, wow, okay. But hear me out. So we're using Rapid Hennick County taxpayer dollars to handle billing for the Rapid Hennick County Water and Sewer Authority Service District and its customer base. I said, we have a treasurer, we have an assistant county administrator, and both have aptitude, and in the case of the treasurer's staff, who can perform these functions quite effectively, efficiently. And, and the key point is cost-effectively. So I want everyone to understand that this is, in my opinion, an excellent move on your part because you are talking about rate increases, but you're also finding small ways in your day-to-day administrative functions to gain efficiencies, which will save the authority money, which should be passed on to your ratepayers. And so I want to say it was a good question that someone raised. And I also, also want to say that I applaud, I applaud this change in approach to billing because I do think we have very talented people, both in the administrator's office and the treasurer's office, who can do this quite effectively. And I think it is really a smart decision. And I think everyone in the county benefits from that. So thank you for, thank you for your part in this initiative. And I'm glad that you took the time to, to mention Treasurer Nick and Ms. Jewell because they do an awesome job as do their staff.
I appreciate you bringing that up. And I also want to say, they, they're paid, they're on their salaries. And it wasn't like anything got added to that. And any, the cost of like doing the computer work and stuff like that with, with our, the company, the county's using, RCWSA is paying for those kind of products. But it's been fabulous. We, we can't tell you enough what a difference that has made to not having to worry about doing this.
Additionally, RCWSA provides vital services to, to the county.
Correct.
At the school. And so there are broader concerns.
Absolutely. Yep, well noted.
And they are, maintain a minimal annual budget. You know, we're shoestring. Extremely efficient, efficient to a fault. But I think. Increase our operational.
I think it's an excellent, excellent area of cooperation that was, is long overdue and taking advantage of it. And these areas of gaining economies of scale, I know I've talked about to the extent possible, if there are areas where you can cooperate with the town of Washington in terms of purchasing materials, et cetera, to, to gain volume discounts in the process, I encourage you to continue talking with them, recognizing that they have their own, own team, own way of managing their, but I, I just see all these small opportunities when they're seized upon, like the billing, the, the billing change, I think is excellent. And I think that it really shows that you're dedicated. While you do have to increase rates to service your debt, you're otherwise dedicated to making sure that you're running as leanly and cost-effectively as possible. So again, I applaud you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I, I would like to say that I really appreciate the initiative to look forward and to get this done. You guys did a lot of hard work in this, as you mentioned, Andrew, not easy to do. Mr. Lloyd, thank you.
Yes, I would like to point out, Will Lloyd has been.
He's done an amazing job. It's just been a different board with him on it. You know, we, Realtors and our dealers, they'll show me. That'll be fun.
So I just wanted to thank you all for getting ahead of this. And I think that it's eye-opening to see just the reality of what needs to happen, what you've done, and what will likely need to happen in the future. And I just support your efforts fully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We have our audit presentation, Robinsons, Farmer, and Cox. Josh.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board for having me. My name is Josh Roller. I'm partner with Robinson, Farmer, Cox. We are based out of Charlottesville. Here today to present the fiscal year 24 audit report that you should have in front of you. We can start on page seven of that report. This is where we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion for the year. Within this three-page letter here, it talks a little bit about the management responsibility. On page eight there, management is responsible for the financials. And then as our responsibilities, we're responsible for exercising judgment on the fair presentation of those financials, as well as assessing risks as it's related to internal controls. That helps us come to the final result, which is that unmodified clean opinion. And then from there, we can flip forward to page, pages 16 and 18. These are your governmental funds, balance sheet, and statement of revenues, expenditures, change, and fund balance for the year. As you can see on page 16, your total general fund, fund balance there, the bottom half of the page, ending fund balance for the year, and the general fund was 11.9 million. And of that total, 8.7 is unassigned. And, you know, that fund balance statement there on the bottom, it's broken out into a little bit more detail further into the report on page 92 or note 26. Flipping forward, what we're kind of skipping right over here, and happy to go back and talk about anything that you guys want to, but are all the footnotes to the financials. The next one I'll point your attention to is page 96, exhibit nine. And this is your general fund budgetary comparison schedule. List out all the different categories of revenues, categories of expenditures in the general fund, showing the original budget, final budget, and actual. Flipping over quite a few more exhibits, onto page 152. This is the second of three letters that we produce as the final kind of audit product. This letter is our auditor's report on internal controls over financial reporting. So we don't issue an actual opinion on the internal control itself. But we do, yeah. We do, in this report, say that we have no deficiencies in internal control, no material weaknesses in internal control. And then two pages forward, page 154. This is our independent auditor's report on compliance by uniform guidance. This is where we've issued unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, as it relates to the federal programs that were required to audit for this year's audit. And I know that's a very, very quick kind of skim through the report. Happy to answer any questions, happy to go back through any other sections or exhibits that you guys want me to go over.
Thanks a lot. And I do this to you every year because I know that you work with so many different localities. And I'm going to do it again and ask you to, off the top of your head, compare us a little bit to other localities with whom you work. One, one area that is encouraging for me, and this has really been the case since 2019 through, through the presence over the course of the last five years, we've seen significant revenue diversification away from property tax revenue. And by my rough estimate, and this is something that Ms. Donahue and I discussed briefly with the county administrator in Nelson County, and she was somewhat impressed actually with the diversification of our revenue over time. But my rough calculation suggests that we're approaching 15% of our, of our, we'll call it our local tax revenue, coming from sources other than, other than property tax revenue. And I guess my question to you is, if, if that number is correct, and I think we're talking roughly about $17 million in total local tax revenue and maybe 2.6 million in other, that's not property tax-related, personal or, or real property. How do you, how do you feel about that number, say 15% from other, other sources? And how does that align with other localities with which you work year to year?
So it definitely varies, you know, locality to locality. If, you know, your local sales tax and your meals, lodging tax, business, or hospitality taxes in a place that drives a lot more tourism, you know, those numbers are going to be significantly higher. But just kind of thinking about other rural counties, and like I probably say every year, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Yep.
But it seems, you know, on par, maybe a little bit better than average, just kind of based on the demographics and the size of the locality.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was, I was getting at. Because, I mean, we have this balancing act, right? I mean, we want, we want to do what we can to, to push businesses that generate more sales tax revenue and on the tourism from more meals and lodging tax revenue. But then there's always tension from a zoning and land use perspective.
Right.
And so we're always walking that fine line. And I think we do, at least I would like to push our number closer to 20% coming from other non-proper, real property and personal property tax sources. But if you feel like, if you feel like it's a decently solid number, at least, I know Candy in Nelson County felt like it was a good number. And, and hearing it from someone in Nelson County where they obviously have a lot going on in terms of farm breweries and farm wineries and distilleries, et cetera, the fact that she was impressed with 15%, I thought was a good sign. So I was just curious to hear from you. But hopefully next year or the year after, we'll, we'll talk about 20%. And then you can actually say how great we are.
Exactly.
I mean, I know you're holding back a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and what I, I can look at a few other, try to think of kind of similar-sized localities and look at that and pull that down pretty easily, and I can send that over to you.
Yeah, I'd be interested. Yeah, and I think, I think the most, the best basis for comparison would be taking real property tax revenue and personal property tax revenue on the one hand, and then just call it other. But we know you already mentioned the main categories. It would be sales and meals and lodging tax revenue, plus some others. But, yeah, so if we could isolate those two categories and do a side-by-side, I think it would at least give us something to shoot for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
I can do that pretty easily.
We didn't talk about the op-ed that Dr. Grimsley and I prepared, but that data's in that op-ed, the DHCD. Uh, the fiscal, the DHCD and their fiscal stress analysis, uh, looks at revenue sources, and they identify five revenue sources, and the four are ones that you could probably think about, and the fifth is other. And, uh, so there's a, a good chart of where we stand in other per capita, uh, compared to everybody else in the state.
Any other questions?
It's always nice to see you and get a clean report.
Yeah, thank you all for having me.
Thanks, everyone. Good job for coming up.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
It's my favorite document.
Oh, sure. A little nighttime reading.
I love it.
All right, we are moving into the Glavion Homes monthly courthouse project update.
Hey, John, thank you for hanging in there with us.
Hello, everyone, uh, my name is John Spain, I'm serving as the project manager for Glavion Homes, and, uh, going to give the update this month, and I want to share my screen.
Do I need to relinquish, or are you able to just take it?
I think I'm in on the tape. Are you seeing, you see?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so everyone had a great Thanksgiving, and, uh, December started off, it kind of feels like winter's coming. Since our last update, we have actually completed the site analysis and, uh, our survey work. Our quote consultant is moving forward with her programming document, and is actually going to meet today with some of the stakeholders to kind of verify her, her program, and will be, uh, preparing the final report, normally, uh, expected in about ten days, on December twelfth. Uh, and we have also, Glavion Homes has been working on the plans, additional plans, and we presented those to the planning oversight committee, uh, the week before Thanksgiving. And, uh, that's why I have up on my screen, we, uh, worked on three, three schemes, and we're comparing, uh, new to freestanding, uh, looking at whether two courtrooms were stacked up over, over each other, or whether they were all on the same floor, uh, side by side, and also looking kind of at different seating options around this, the site. So what I'm showing here is a site plan for, uh, existing, uh, addition to the existing courthouse. This is the first floor plan, where it, uh, thought was to keep the existing courthouse largely as it is, uh, using it as kind of the entry. And then moving, this scheme has the stacked courtrooms, so we have one courtroom, the, uh, combined court on the first floor. Moving up to the circuit court on the second floor, larger courtroom. And in all of these schemes, we were working with the topography and trying to put, um, secure parking and holding underground. This is, uh, one of the new, the new freestanding courthouse concepts. In this one, uh, the clerks are on the first floor, all of the kind of, uh, public facing functions are on the first floor, and the two courtrooms are side by side, and which allows them to share some, share some of the holding facilities. And again, parking and, and secure, uh, solid court, it's on this, uh, it kind of nestle into the ground. This is the third scheme, another freestanding. And this one also has the stacked courtrooms. And then the court of those meetings, we kind of came up with some questions, uh, kind of looking at what is needed versus, uh, what would be good to have. And, uh, I, I'm saying is we'll need some input from the board supervisors, and I guess we would be interested to know how the board supervisors would want to, uh, proceed on that. And also just to give you the next steps, we, we had some other talks, some specific comments. We are revising all of the floor plans, uh, based on those comments, and working our way down to two options, a freestanding and addition. Uh, we'll be engaging our cost consultant soon as, as we get those plans developed, and, and preparing for a presentation to the board supervisors. We're also arranging our geotechnical consultant to come out, and they'll be out in some, December. You know, as I said, our core consultant is, is meeting today with the stakeholders.
Thank you, John. So, um, one of the main themes of the most recent planning oversight committee meeting that was held in this room, um, was the incorporation of the additional space from the earlier concepts, a second courtroom, uh, which is jury capable. And then the incorporation of space for, um, jury assembly before the, the jurors would have to go to court and be, uh, narrowed down from a group of maybe forty to, uh, the twelve or however many are serving on, on that jury. And those are spaces that, additional spaces to the earlier concept that were discussed either here as part of the building committee when, when the board met with the building committee and the stakeholders, or came up during earlier discussions between the stakeholders and Glavion Homes. It's not a surprise when you add to the building that the space needs go up. And when the space needs go up, the cost of the structure will go up. And there was a fair amount of shock, I believe, from the community, um, about adding a, or building a twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand square foot building that only had one courtroom. And so, uh, now I think the most important thing is managing expectations with the board and the community. If we're moving towards building a larger than a twenty thousand square foot building to accommodate additional spaces than were contemplated before, uh, whether that be inside, uh, parking for judges, or second courtroom, or other assembly spaces, or, or whatever, we need to have a process to vet that early. Uh, the stakeholders have had a preliminary chance to discuss that. And, um, of course, there are a lot of perspectives on what would be appropriate or needed, uh, and the extent to which we need a full two courtrooms, or one full courtroom and another, uh, lesser courtroom. Uh, but those sort of questions need to be nailed down so that we can make it to the end of the concept process. And, uh, I'm, it's not clear to me how we should do that, how you would like to do that. Uh, but we need to determine that, and that's, um, a significant requirement before Glavion Homes can go very much further with their concept work.
Seems to me, when we first started talking about the need of the size, um, one thing I, I wasn't, wasn't clear for me anyway, was when the stakeholders were approached on size needs, um, was it based on a county of seventy-four hundred people? Or was it based on a county where seventy-five percent of the court cases are from outside coming in? So one of make sure that when we're talking to people, we're not just saying, for your size county, what do you need? It's for your size county that's got outsiders that come in on a regular basis, what do you need?
The trainer, the consultant to Glavion Homes, has been looking at, uh, court records.
Yeah.
Not how many humans live within a geographic boundary, but how many cases happen?
Yeah.
And is there a way to project that forward, um, based on our population and the population of the perimeter communities? So they're trying to look at it from that perspective. We obviously have a, um, reasonable appetite for building structures here, and so those two have to come together somehow, uh, at the end of the day.
And are we looking at digitizing, um, versus keeping paper on site and that kind of?
Uh, I know I get way outside of my lane, but most of that is prescribed by state law, right? To the extent that the state law will allow the clerks to, to handle their documents differently, then it's up to those elected officials to do it differently. Um, and I'm sure they would, would be willing to cooperate and coordinate with the board of supervisors, and ultimately, uh, you have to provide them adequate space, and so there can be a lot of discussions of what that means.
Mr. Spain, thank you for giving us this presentation. Um, this is Van Carney, uh, speaking. What, um, I'm, as I'm listening to Mr. Curry here, I'm understanding that at some point you guys are going to need clear direction, uh, from us, and, um, so are we looking at, we have three concepts before us, and we need to zero in on one, two?
No, no, so the end of the concept study was intended to land with two concepts, one of which the board could select and drive through full design. And so, um, the, Glavion Homes prepared two standalone concepts, really to explore the two courtrooms on one floor versus stacked courtrooms, which have some pros and cons that go with them. So ultimately, uh, what I think Glavion Homes and I would like is to understand the, the methodology the board would like to, to use to help, uh, identify and discern between the needs and the nice-to-haves. Uh, and of course, the, it is very tricky, but at the end of the day, there need to be lines on the paper that reflect something, and, uh, the, I don't want us to get to a point where, uh, we have concepts that are then ready to advance in specificity to schematic design, design development, construction documents that don't reflect our appetite financially or volume of building. And so those have to come together soon.
So in the, in the, the meeting with the oversight committee, what was the level of importance of the second courtroom?
Uh, I think there was a he- a healthy discussion that, uh, early on, I think there were conversations that fully duplicative space would be valuable because cutting a little here and there in the sides, you know, maybe it wouldn't be worth it. Uh, but I think, uh, following that, um, I think there was some discussions that something smaller but still capable of serving a jury, uh, would be good. For example, both of the courtrooms as conceived right now are larger than this one. Um, in my mind, the second one, this is very capable, has been a number of times. So the, one could be small in, in the current, now, you're not going to save a ton of space, uh, but you save some. It's the fully duplicating, if, do you really want to have two jury trials happening at the same time? If that's the case, you need two jury deliberation spaces that are cut off from the rest of the world so they can do their thing, and it starts to duplicate a lot of things in two different, uh, judge chambers, and so... If that's what we want to do, then that's okay, and we can go to that point. But we want to make sure the board understands where we are.
So some of the driving factors for me would be, uh, you know, if the first concept, which was attached to the two buildings, the clerk's office and the current courthouse, the differential between the price of a standalone and that, if there is a difference, uh, you know, that's going to be the driver, which is what do we need? What are the wants at the top of the need for, for judicial administration, getting all that done, and then keeping costs obviously as reasonable as possible? So if there's a big difference between building a standalone building and connecting it with the other two, that'll be informative, at least from my perspective.
Yeah, and those discussions are extremely preliminary, um, and I think the first, I think what I heard in the words of John's mouth is that they were thinking that the addition would be more, uh, because you're touching all this space.
Yeah.
On the same breath, you no longer have the space for some other purpose.
Um, I guess, I'm just talking very high level here because, uh, I, I'll need time to wrestle with this, but it seems like we're, our board is going to have to make some decisions on behalf of our constituents on key sort of yes or no questions, whether it's number of courtrooms, or square, this range of square footage, or this range. So I think it, to me, it would be helpful if you, in, uh, cooperation with Glavion Homes, could just enumerate those things that we're going to have to make decisions on, and then if we need to just go down that list and make decisions, we ought to, because, um, right now it's kind of, I mean, this is still very preliminary, it's a bit murky to me. So as soon as there is clarity on what kind of fundamental baseline decisions have to be made, those options should be listed and provided to us, and we should, um, make decisions.
And I think a lot of them are very nuanced, so I think what might, uh, be helpful is for this body to sit jointly with the planning oversight committee. Here's some of the pros and cons that are maybe subjective and gray, but have real consequences attached, good and bad, and maybe be able to toss through, and I think agenda leading into that is the enumeration of some of those key points.
Good, yeah, I, cause I think, I think that's great that the oversight group is working in isolation. Obviously, we're going to soon come to a point where our decisions will overlap with our interests, and so I appreciate that suggestion, and I think we should proceed in this way.
Where did the idea of underground parking come from?
Uh, it's secure parking for judges, the facility guidelines, the Supreme Court's guidelines recommend secure parking. Um, I'm not sure if it came up, John, do you recall if it came up during interviews?
No, I believe it's largely from the guidelines, and it's, we're kind of, the, the site slips away, so we're trying to take advantage, it's not really underground, it's kind of, I'll call it half underground.
Yeah, so walk, walkout basement parking.
So I mean, it's half as expensive as underground parking?
Well, you know, one of, one of my first bullet points was, you know, maybe that's one thing we can do without. Uh, if we can find a way to structure the building in a way that accommodates.
I mean, we certainly want the judges to have a secure parking area.
Yeah, I think.
And to feel safe entering the building, and that's always been on the punch list to have a separate, a separate entrance for judges into the building. However, when you start talking about underground parking, it's a completely different bailiwick, and, you know, I see another zero on the final number, or, or a larger number than it would be without underground.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of ways to provide secure parking, and, um, I think there are responsible ways, and maybe this has just worked because of the, the building, there may be other ways to do that.
I mean, and I guess the other, the other question I wrestle with, and this is my perspective, having served on the building committee, I'm not convinced it's wise to, um, continue to lump together the county attorney and the clerk's office in the building with the courtrooms. I know we sort of passed that milestone a while ago, but, um, I do wonder if there's wisdom in keeping them as standalone buildings and lowering the footprint, and working on the buildings to accommodate their future space needs, and making them secure public facing facilities as well. But I don't know that it all needs to be under one roof.
Did you mean the Commonwealth's attorney or the county attorney?
Well, same difference in our case, but yeah.
Yeah, no, but, yeah.
The, the additional space for the, for, for art, you know, for lack of a better word. Uh, I mean, the clerk's office is in its public space facing, and in this, and, um, it was in the, the last round of designs to include the Commonwealth's attorney in there too. I, I just, I, I want, at the end of the day, I want to design a building that we can agree on and be successful for Rappahannock County. And the scale of the buildings and the scope of the buildings that I see coming forward, I'm not sure will ever gain enough public support to where they can be accomplished. And so I have asked myself, how can we pivot on this project to decrease the footprint and increase the effectiveness of what we're doing? And I know, I don't expect this to be a now question for the board. I certainly don't have a now question on what we've seen today, I can, I can barely read it. So, um, but I, I do wonder if there's wisdom in, in taking back the building blocks and saying, do we really want to put all this together? Does a building this size really fit on this campus?
Right. And that was explored a little bit with the earlier concepts.
Yes.
The, the minimum size building you could accommodate to get your courts in, and, uh, and so the board could consider it again. I think the conclusion at that time was, once you're accommodating all the things you need to accommodate, it wasn't, it seemed to make sense to, to add the others, but... you need to accommodate, it wasn't, seemed to make sense to add the others, but you know, this, certainly the Board is driving this process.
We have layered in the additional courtroom, and costs have gone up 30% since those initial discussions five years ago. So, I mean, it's, point taken, and I think it's, you know, things to think about.
Well, and we, I mean, Gary had always brought forward, you know, do we need a true dedicated courtroom, or can it be a flex-type space that can serve as a courtroom when needed? And Gary, I certainly don't mean to speak on your behalf, but I do know that there is always, certainly, we want to accommodate everyone and the court's needs at any given time. But if one courtroom is, is not being utilized, then have we wasted money? Will we waste money? How can we both be most efficient in designing the space? And of course, shared community spaces, restrooms, break rooms, things of that nature for the employees, those are always a concern, too, as we, as we start to talk about, how can we be more efficient and lower the cost of this building design?
While also building that for many years into the future, that we can only guess what will be, you know, the needs.
Yeah.
It's a tough balance anytime you're building a community structure that the county's not going to go out of business anytime soon. And so we want to make sure we're considering 50-year horizon.
Yeah.
And that's tricky.
So what steps did he from us?
Well, I wanted to make sure the Board understood where the Planning Oversight Committee was. I appreciate the fact that this is not very detailed, but because these are, this is never clear, this is concept. I don't want anybody to come away from this conversation thinking, oh, there's a floor plan. This is, these are concept floor plans intended to identify what is the building, you know, massing, what does it mean when you start taking all the different spaces that the stakeholders have talked about and put them on a piece of paper and arrange them in a way that would work to get you started, get sizes and whatnot. And so I think from this conversation, working towards a meeting with the POC makes a lot of sense to me. And I can work with Glavien Holmes and the POC to arrange that sometime, hopefully this month, I think would make sense. Couple weeks from now, before we get into the crazy holidays again, if that works for the Board.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
All right.
Madam Chair, regarding our agenda, I know that Ms. Bowling-Wilson and Mr. LaGraff have been waiting patiently and.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks, sorry. And they're getting a resolution with, you know, no gift card stapled to the back. So we're asking a lot of them to wait. I wonder how we could get them up sooner rather than later, and would it be a matter of just shifting the consent agenda? Do we need to adopt the consent agenda first before we present? So I would just put forward a motion that we put public comment after the consent agenda. Just switch that order.
Yeah, unless somebody wanted to talk to you about your consent agenda decisions.
Well, I, I mean.
I move that we remove the resolutions for Jane Bowling-Wilson and Jim LaGraff from the consent agenda and move them into.
Smart, thank you.
A separate standalone agenda item to be undertaken at this time, prior to public comment or Board approval.
Brilliant.
See point B.
There you go.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Let me do the outline.
Well done. I wasn't quick enough to think of that. Second.
Second. I think we'll have enough vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I move that we approve the two resolutions that are appended to the agenda and on Board docs.
Second.
Why don't we allow Mr. Kearney to come back?
Yep.
Since he's already signed it.
Oh, I heard him say yes for a minute.
There's Mr. Kearney.
We're approving the resolution, so we can knock those out.
We bumped up the, okay. So we already amended the agenda.
We could just do.
We called out those two items.
Yep. And do we need to vote on that, or just?
We're voting, we're voting, yeah, for the resolutions.
He's already voted to move them. You're going to now vote roll call to approve both resolutions.
Ah, okay.
We're waiting for him.
So both of them at the same time, roll call vote.
And I'm, I'm sorry, who moved to approve both resolutions? And who's?
I moved, and Christine's second, and Van's now back. And now we're going to do a roll call, and then we can give the presentation.
Yes.
Got it.
All right, you ready?
Resolutions.
Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
And I also.
Hopefully, there are many people who wanted.
And the, the two recipients are now saying, man, I'm glad I'm getting out of this because government's now working. It was complicated.
Yeah, better than me. Yeah. I learned something.
He got it. He breaks.
Smile on your face. This is a resolution of appreciation for Encompass Community Supports Executive Director Jim LaGraff. Whereas Jim LaGraff served the region and the citizens of Rappahannock County for nearly seven years as the Executive Director of Encompass Community Supports, ECS. And whereas Jim reshaped the organizational and financial structure of ECS, maximizing the benefit of the organization to Rappahannock County's most vulnerable citizens. And whereas during his tenure leading Encompass Community Supports, he guided the creation and adoption of a new strategic plan that will direct the services of the organization for the coming years. And whereas his dedicated support was especially felt by the community's older adults and those managing mental health challenges, particularly during the coronavirus pandemic. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincerest thanks to Jim LaGraff for his professional guidance of Encompass Community Supports, and wishes him all of the best as he transitions to the role of Executive Director of the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishments of this dedicated public servant adopted the second day of December 2024. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot for everything.
Being a Rappahannock County citizen, I know that Jim was very interested in all of the business that you already had before you were lucky to sit in there.
Guaranteed.
Absolutely. Jane Bowling-Wilson.
Resolution of appreciation for Northern Piedmont Community Foundation Executive Director Jane Bowling-Wilson. Whereas Jane Bowling-Wilson served the region and the citizens of Rappahannock County for nearly 10 years as the Executive Director of the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, MPCF. And whereas Jane helped grow the MPCF foundation assets from $9 million in 2015 to $41 million in 2023, providing a three nearly million grant funding lifeline to regional nonprofit organizations, an additional $360,000 in scholarships to area youth during the most recent annual funding cycle. And whereas during her tenure leading MPCF, the annual one-day Give Local Piedmont event expanded from 138 donors to 225 donors who have recently provided annual contributions exceeding $1 million. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors extends its sincere thanks to Jane Bowling-Wilson for her professional guidance of the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and wishes her all of the best in her future endeavors. And be it further resolved that this resolution be spread across the minutes of the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors for all citizens to reflect upon the service and accomplishment of this dedicated community servant adopted the second day of December 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving into public comment now, all right? Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized when you come up. Give us your name and your district. Yes, ma'am? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, I'm Margaret Bond, Piedmont District, and thank you very much for the chance to be able to speak today. I want to echo Dr. Grimsley's comment that this really is the season of Thanksgiving. And I must tell you, I am blown away by the presentations that preceded this point today, and the number of volunteer organizations, the scope of volunteer work that's being done, and the dedication of the people involved with it. I don't want to leave without extending that awe and appreciation to all the members of the Board of Supervisors, although not technically volunteers. I know you do so much more above and beyond what your salary covers, so certainly I think you deserve to share in that recognition of the season of Thanksgiving. It impressed me when I had a company over for Thanksgiving dinner and, from out of town, and talked about what the county is involved with. And I wish I'd known a little bit more about the volunteer services, because I think I would have become even more obnoxious in talking about how great Rappahannock County is to live. But it did make me reflect on, on the comments that, you know, Alexander de Tocqueville was a great proponent of the American experiment and visited this country quite a bit in its early years, and wrote extensively about what he perceived as the volunteer spirit, the community spirit, the coming together and the generosity of the people of America, regardless of what their background was, to make the experiment work. And I think if, if the presentations today are any example of, or any reflection on that, they certainly are a recognition for how the community, which doesn't have a large budget to work with, but has extend, instead, marshaled the assets of the spirit of community cooperation to make the county not only work but thrive. If you could tolerate one more piling on of this greatness and goodness and wonderfulness of the Thanksgiving season, I'd like to introduce one more organization which is part of this giving and generosity, spirit of generosity, and has worked, in fact, with a number of the organizations from which you heard earlier, and that is the Lions Club. I'm not a member of the Lions Club, but I do know a lot about their activities and extent of their organization and volunteer effort, vicariously through my husband, Mark Anderson, who I've shamelessly, you know, bludgeoned into coming here today to talk to you about what the Lions Club has done. Didn't want to do it because it sounds like you're just tooting your own horn, and I said, no, you all need to know what another organization is doing, what your constituents might ask you about for help that they need someday, and how it interfaces with the other organizations from which you have heard today. So, Madam Chair, if I may cede the rest of my three minutes for public comment to Mark Anderson.
We're not going to cede, but we'll let Mark go next. Thank you.
I like this Star Wars podium. That's great. Mark Anderson for the Piedmont District. I am not Roger Welch. Roger Welch, as you know, was both the president of the Lions and the chair of this body for, I don't know how many years. But I will tell you what the Lions Club have been up to the last half year or so. We're not here to ask for any money. All we want is a time, a chance to do our service. And the motto of the Lions Club is, "We serve." And that is truly what happens to the Lions in Rappahannock County. They're about 45 active members now. We had five or six new members in the past year, which drove the average age down to about 72, which is youthful by our county's standards. Let me talk about the senior load closet, which the Rapid Home representative mentioned. This is a large two-car garage with extensions right in front of the Farm Bureau on 211. It is chock full of senior appliances, hospital beds, wheelchairs, electric scooters, all the kinds of things seniors sometimes need to assist them with stay-at-home living. Through Rapid Home and the Farm Bureau, we, the Lions, service this equipment, stockpile it, and issue it out upon request. And because of Jim Racer, who most of you know, who heads up this program for the Lions, we respond very fast. Within two to three days typically of a request being made, we deliver the equipment to the person's home and pick it up if the person no longer needs it. So that's been an effective program. That does not cost the county anything or anybody else. And I suspect if we didn't do this, Medicaid would, or Medicare would probably pay for a lot of it, which, to me, would not be as economic as this. The big activity the Lions did this fall was our Chili Fest, which is the thinly disguised lottery with chili. And it raised over $26,000 this year, which goes, all goes into our scholarship program. And our scholarships are four-year, two-year, and trades. And we're particularly putting emphasis on the trades this year because of the opening of the trades, Trading Center up at Laurel Ridge, Warrenton Campus, I guess you'd call it. The Lions paid a visit up there this fall. Ms. Comer was there. And we got to talk to all the kids from Rappahannock Schools who are involved in the trades program. And let me tell you, they're very energized, very enthusiastic, and I think they're determined to get through the course and get their qualifications to get jobs in the trades. And we have a probably unheralded resource in Rappahannock County, Darren McKinney, who coordinates with all the instructors up there. He is a gem. He, you couldn't pay enough money to get somebody like him to help coordinate this program. And the money we raised, the $26,000, as I said, all went out for scholarships, plus a little more we raised for other places. Another thing we did this fall, which we do every year, is hearing and vision tests for the school kids. The Lions, about 100 years ago, were charged by Helen Keller to develop services to assist people with vision impairments. And we added to that hearing impairment some years later. Our Rappahannock Lions have acquired five machines for testing hearing and vision and trade operators, and we go to the schools, all the schools in Rappahannock County every year to do these tests. I think they're state-minded. If we didn't do it, for no cost, the school district would have to pay for it, probably pay a contractor or somebody. So that's another place where somebody is saved. Finally, I'll mention the plastic bags again, because that's one of my favorites.
It's amazing.
We are so far ahead of our other counties around us that have much larger populations, it's just uncanny. We're up to, I, I don't have the metrics, and I'll have them the next time I come. We are up to 28 or 29 benches that we bought with our, turning into plastic bags. I thought the county was going to be overcrowded with these benches and public spaces, but there's plenty of demand still for putting these out. So we're going to keep doing the program as long as we can get the plastic bags. And the people in this county are very good at setting aside their plastic bags and putting them in the bins at the two landfill facilities. So that's worked out really well. Finally, the, there is a Facebook site for the Rappahannock Lions. It has a lot of new content because of our media person. It's RappahannockLions@Facebook. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice update, good idea.
Happy Holidays, Anita Ramos, Hampton District. You've just heard a presentation about the new plans for a courthouse or addition or whatever. I want to remind you, Mr. Curry touched on it for a few moments. This building was first started, what, 1832? And addition put on to make this courtroom, or something like that, in the night, early part of the 20th century? And now we're looking here in the 21st century for something. It's not going to be an ultra-dome, but it's going to last a long time. So we had more people in this county in the 1930s than we have now. We're realizing that a lot of our court business is from people from outside the area, so the size of the county doesn't matter as much as one might think. Please, think about not a 50-year times period, but even longer. And our needs are going to change, going to grow. And so let's not be short. And I know that it's money, yes, we all understand that, but imagine what it costs later on when somebody else has to add on, or whatever. So anyway, please. So anyway, please think even further ahead. I've been around a lot of public buildings that have been added on to or built in the library system. I was right by Fairfax County Courthouse when they went in the giant expansion. And boy, is it different and is it so much better? Because I've been in the old and I've been in the new. And I can tell you the difference for dealing with the people that have been incarcerated in particular. So anyway, thank you very much. And like I say, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nina.
Ann Yeoman, Piedmont District. And this is really primarily informational, but I do have to say that what I'm going to be talking about actually is linked to the organizations that have already been presenting. So just about exactly a year ago, I talked to the Board of Supervisors and the public about establishing free tax filing in Rappahannock County. First time in many, many, many years that it's been available. And we did that. And I later reported, and I'll just throw out a couple of numbers. We pulled down more than $34,000 in refunds for the people who filed with us. We also saved to those people an estimated $11,000 in fees that they would otherwise have paid to preparers, also with a very high accuracy rate. No rejects. I take that back. We had one reject because the taxpayer didn't know their IRS IP number. But I just wanted to make sure that the Board of Supervisors and the public, anybody else who's watching this, knows that we're going to be back again this year. We have some additional volunteers. We can certainly use more volunteers. We had to turn away about at least 15 people last year because we didn't have enough volunteer hours to actually serve them. So we referred them to some of our more or less collaborative partners and in other places. We don't really need money. We have the computers, secure computers, secure routers. We have an immense amount of training, both from the IRS and from AARP. So if you're really interested, I'd be happy to share some of these training materials with you. All the volunteers are IRS certified. And there is a lot of policy issues around security and confidentiality, all that sort of thing. So no one needs to be concerned that their personal financial business is going to be shared. So again, just informational, please share this with your constituents and the public, both the volunteers. And we will be letting people know when we're bringing up the site. So we will be beginning probably the second week in February. It's a little bit later than the official IRS opening. But the reason for that is that many people do not have their documents when the IRS is officially open. We'll be running through April 12th. We will be doing it by appointment again, and we'll be publicizing the number and the website address to use to set up appointments. But we also this year will be doing drop-offs. That, I mean, the taxpayer can come in with all of their documents. We'll do a brief intake, see if they've got everything we need to do. But they don't have to stay while we're doing the return. That gives us a little more flexibility for the volunteers and a little more flexibility for the taxpayers, so they don't have to hang out and make a specific appointment. So we're looking forward to, I would like to double the number of taxpayers than the amount of money that we bring in. So please, share the information. I'll be putting out more details for you to share, whatever. And if anybody would like to be trained to be an IRS-certified taxpayer, it's intensive, but it is, if you can do your own taxes, you can do this. So thank you very much, and please share this information with your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter, let Piedmont. I'm here to make your lives easier. Deep six is the plan that connects this building to the next building. It's never going to work. I'm not going to go into all the details about it. Try to visualize how it's going to look. Imagine these roof lines, the bricks. Forget it. The bricks in this building were cast in 1833. You're never going to match them. We tried to. We remodeled the building across the street. Can't do it. The other thing that's a hidden cost in that plan is, where will you meet? Because this is going to come part of the courthouse. And the judges have said they're not going to have non-judicial things in the courthouse. There's nothing there for a meeting room anyway, unless you're going to use one of the courtrooms. But the judge said, that's not going to happen. So where are you going to be? That's going to be a cost. It's going to be, not shown directly, but going to be a built-in cost if you take this building out of the ability to use as you're moving. You're going to have to build either another building or find some other building in town to remodel. The on and off is going to be hard to do to accommodate the people that you've seen here today. So I say, save your money. Tell them not to spend any more planning on that particular concept and focus on the one building. We do need a courthouse. I'm not arguing against that. But I think it should be a standalone building. And by doing that, you can focus in on what's really going to be possible, I think, in my opinion. I'd be glad to talk to any of you all privately if you want my details. I don't want to go into detail now, it's just too much. We've all been here too long. You have my sympathies. I've had to sit through these meetings as hard as, and at some point, you just got caught into it. But that's what I have to say, and I hope you'll seriously consider doing it.
Thanks. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
I didn't want to get ahead of any citizens that wanted to speak out. So I'm Gail Crooks, the Director of Rappahannock County Department of Social Services. And I am just here to put another plug in for our holiday assistance program, for our Angel Program for the children. This is not the Senior Angel Program. That is something we work collaboratively with our other partners who were speaking up today. This is for children, infant through age 17. And right now, we have received applications for 143 children. So each year, it has expanded. Last year, we served 137 children out of 54 families. Just to give a little background, I have commitments so far for about 53 of those children. And so I'm going to take a leap of faith and believe that two of our sites are going to fully meet the angels that are on their trees with members of their parish or their church family, which leaves me looking for another 40. So I'm just putting the announcement out here. If the other 40 are out there, you can pick up an angel at the library or you can contact the agency. We still have some angels that haven't been hung on a tree yet because we were filling the trees in as they got depleted. But last year, it's about 50/50, boys and girls, last year. But almost half, if not a little bit over half, of our children that got served are over 12, right? A lot of times, the younger set does get served through some other programs. And people tend to overlook the teens. But personally, deprivation is all year. And why should you have to go without just because you've crossed that magic threshold after 12? It still hurts, right? When you realize that you are missing something out that maybe your friends are having some access to. So I ask everyone to just please join us in helping make Christmas a little bit brighter. We need 40 more sponsors or fewer sponsors, but at least 40 angels sponsored. And we'd be happy to match you up. We do ask that the gifts come to us unwrapped. What we do is we deliver the gifts to the family, but we take wrapping paper, scissors, and tape with them as well so that the family can be part of that process and just have a part in the giving for their children. So it brings the whole family into it. And if anyone has any questions about the program, they can contact me at gail.a.crooks@dss.virginia.gov. We do take donations to the program if it's something that someone doesn't have time to sponsor an angel but would like to contribute. And we will use that and go out and, we have some elves that we can send out to do those purchasing. So I just, thank you. And I hope in January, I'm going to come during public comment or separate, different time, and just report on how many families are actually served and spread a little bit of good news. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Gail, we recently cleaned our garage, and we found it must have been a Santa gift that Santa didn't get out of the back of our garage. Brand-new toy. Is that something that we can just hand off to you?
Sure.
And just?
Yeah, if they're new unwrapped toys. Because what we do is we also, the other reason we ask for it to be unwrapped is to, you know, make sure there's kind of an even dispersal.
Yeah.
And sometimes we do have to maybe boost, right? A gift set a little bit, which is perfectly fine. That's what some of our donors, you know, have intended to. I also want to give a shout-out right now to the Food Pantry. Last year, we started an active partnership with them about being a referral source. And so I would say over half of our applications are completed at the Food Pantry, and then we're picking them up from the Food Pantry. So already, our, kind of our co-location is, you know, kind of reaping the benefits. We're able to better identify needs in our community and serve them in a more collaborative manner. So thank you.
Can you share your preferred timeline?
Well, we are trying to have the gifts back in the agency by December 6, which is this Friday, right? So that we can do distribution starting December 9. But believe me, if you sponsor and you say, Gail, I can't get them there till, that's okay. We will get them to the children. Our whole agency just, you know, kind of steps up and makes sure that it all gets done.
Okay.
Atlantic Union Bank, is that where the pickup location is for the angels?
The bank is the pickup spot for the senior angels.
Okay.
So, and yes, please, because some of our DSS is part of the partner agencies that work with that. So at least 15 of those names are adults actively receiving services through the agency. And I believe in total, there's over 100.
Okay.
And I don't know quite the status of that.
Library kids.
Libraries, kids, bank for the seniors.
Got it.
Go both. Do both.
Two angels.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the Board, I hadn't intended to say anything today, but I'm Jean Clements, Wakefield District, and a senior judge with the Court of Appeals. And I've had the pleasure of appearing before you on several prior occasions. The only thing today that I want to commit to your thinking is, please, when you consider the issues regarding the courthouse, do not look at it as the need that exists today. You have a golden opportunity to make a good and correct choice. And in my view, part of that choice must be to consider the reasonable needs for the reasonably foreseeable future. And I urge you not to lose sight of that consideration. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the courtroom? There's at least one person on Zoom that may wish to speak. So anybody on Zoom wanting to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. That was bad. Delete. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you. Now we're at the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'd like to pull out of the consent agenda item number, sorry, I was prepared and now I'm not. Just bear with me if you don't mind. Thank you. Item five, please.
All right, we'll pull item five. Anything else under consent agenda? All right. None? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve the consent agenda without item five.
I haven't made that motion yet.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
I'll go ahead and put forward a motion to adopt the consent agenda minus item five and the two that were already pulled.
Right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair, on item five, I just, I don't want to belabor this point, but, you know, we have a strong tradition of very involved citizens in our county. And sometimes involved citizenship morphs into being a local government hobbyist, as one great county administrator once coined the phrase. And I appreciate that people spend time, raise questions about items that show up on our agenda. But we received communication from a citizen suggesting that with respect to item five, that this extension that we were going to consider as part of the consent agenda was an extension of time that was requested out of time and that we should therefore overlook it. And that led to other communication from at least one other citizen. It required a call from Mr. Carney, the county administrator. It required our staff's time. And all I would say is that when citizens decide to spend significant time over and over and over scrutinizing every little thing that we do, please keep a couple of things in mind. Number one, we're effectively volunteers. And our staff's time is extremely valuable. It's taxpayer time. And number two, raising questions repeatedly, over and over and over, meeting after meeting after meeting on every matter, I'm just going to go out and say it directly, I tune that out. And so I would say, keep your powder dry. If you do have the time and interest in local government and you want to comment, when you do comment, make account, make sure you're right, make sure you're accurate. Because in fact, the question raised about this extension of time was based on a misreading of the zoning ordinance. And that just goes to show that we have competent staff who are getting the job done and are keeping the trains running on time. And again, I appreciate citizen involvement, but I just ask citizens, especially those who appear before us over and over and over, objecting to things or raising questions about things that are not even in their voting district, to please show restraint. And again, keep your powder dry and comment in such a way that is meaningful and is something that we can actually act upon. Because I feel like we're sometimes being beat over the head to the point of, as I said, tuning folks out. So with that, and recognizing that this extension that we were going to entertain as part of the consent agenda is fully in line with what's allowed under the zoning ordinance, I would move that we extend the validity of special exception permit 23-09-01 for a period of one year.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Appointments.
Yeah, just a reminder to the board that you have a vacancy due to resignation. And I would love to have some feedback from you on how you would like to fill this, if you would like an advertisement in the paper, or perhaps you have been networking and have talked to people. Let me know how I can help. This is not one of the bodies that I would advertise automatically.
I don't think. I don't think an advertisement will be necessary. I know I was approached by a couple of people after the last time, so I think we can encourage them to submit applications and go from there. I think we may have a hard, very hard decision before us.
Next month.
Correct.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you for the efforts. Is that all you needed?
Yep.
Construction and renovation projects.
Still waiting on the DHR grant, so we're getting close to late in 2024, I think. So maybe we'll hear from the state on whether we are successful with that grant application. You heard a little bit from Glave Homes, and we've got some work to do to get a joint meeting set up, so that's great. The garage processing building, it did hire the engineer to design the sewer connection, which was really the hanging thing before we can go to bid for the whole thing. So he was out over Thanksgiving break trying to gather some elevation data, but he doesn't use T-Mobile, so he couldn't get his equipment to send. but he doesn't use T-Mobile, so he couldn't get his equipment to sing.
That's right.
Told him I would meet with him sometime and use my phone as a hotspot. So that's wrap the heck for you. We're, let's see, the school board office generator that's kind of on pause. We've got our switchgear is here. The contract has been awarded to Rush River Electrical Services LLC, local contractor, which is, this project was kind of right-sized for them rather than the big company that did our big projects. So they'll be getting to work here soon to be ready for the generator when it arrives towards the end of the calendar year. The elementary school shelter generator project, I have a draft design on my desk. And all the equipment has been released for shipment from the manufacturer, which means now we just wait for like, I don't know, 60 weeks or something. No, six, like, a year. That'll be crazy. We'll talk about the next agenda item and the next agenda, the next item and the next agenda item. And then the parking spot up at Sperryville Volunteer Fire Department worked out. Maybe a little follow-up stuff there. We're gonna, working with Rick to get a new railing put in on the part of the walkway that was closest to the door. And that's all been coordinated with the fire department, so they're all working along.
Excellent.
Any questions?
Moving into voiceover IP.
So as board is well aware, this is, this project has been something we've talked about for a very long time to try to replace our very costly phone system with something that is more reliable and more cost-effective. And the great news is that we found that a modern phone system is in fact much more cost-effective on an operational funding or cost perspective. However, we really don't have a network to leverage such a modern system. And so we worked with a state, a contractor, has state contracts through higher education, and worked out a pretty much turnkey solution to provide, network all of our buildings together, re-network within the buildings, provide the cameras that we discussed a long time ago and the board approved the project to put new cameras in the courthouse, around the courthouse, using courthouse security funds. Update wireless access points in all of our buildings so their Wi-Fi actually works here where people, a lot of people don't have cell coverage. And then provide for the VoIP phones. I shared with you pricing before and that was over half a million dollars. And the savings operationally was gonna be 15 grand a year. So that, that ROI is not great, but there are functionality improvements that come with that that are hard to monetize or justify in form of money. So I'd also been talking to other VoIP vendors for a while. And second vendor, I discussed the broader project with them and whether they were able to or had access to contracts to do more of the work. And they said they did, but they didn't want to provide cameras. So, okay. They priced everything out for me, except for the cameras. They would install cameras for us and all that, but not provide them. Their costs came in much less. And so I summarized those in the narrative here in a little table. And rather, don't want to really get into vendor names at this point in time. Just, I don't even know if the board's ready to push on with this, this project because it's still costly. So you can see vendor A, vendor B, $335,000 for all the networking and equipment and switches and, and firewalls and access points and phones. And actually, the phones are free in this one. Cameras and all that. What I've done is just copied over the cost of the camera equipment. The few items that weren't, were excluded in vendor B's contract, I just copied the pricing over from vendor A. I think we can probably do better if we switch up the manufacturer of the camera. It's kind of a luxury brand in A. But nonetheless, it provided as close to an apples to apples as I could get. And the other thing that, the annual recurring IT support was really full ser, more full service with vendor A and vendor B is more focused on managing from a distance the switches and firewalls and all that stuff, and not the boots-on-the-ground stuff, which we would have to backfill and supplement some other way, which there are a number of other firms around that could do that. I share for you that our current bright-speed copper-based telephony charge is about $32,000 a year. And you can see the recurring cost is anywhere from 11,000 to 15,000, 16,000 when we switch over. So it's a good savings, just not one that's gonna pay for this project. So I guess where I'm at at this point is, is this a project that the board is wanting to invest in? It's definitely needed. I have worry about our copper telephone system all the time, that something's going to break and it's not gonna be something that can be fixed quickly. We had a scare maybe a year ago and it was just a little ACDC transformer thing. And we were very lucky that that was all that it was. But these things aren't made anymore, and so you're, you're repairing by eBay if you can find the part. And more and more, the CenturyLink BrightSpeed people who know how to work on these are not working for CenturyLink and BrightSpeed anymore. They're moved on and, you know, those, those folks are just gone, you know, from the industry. And so we, we have real risk on that side.
Yep.
We could roll out a new VoIP system that might not have very good reliability. We have been testing one around the county. A few phones in admin, a few phones placed around the county, and they work okay. I tried to implement a wireless one in the building office because they don't have any network wiring there. It's all wireless except for the copier, and it didn't really work right, the wireless thing. So you have to wire or have much better Wi-Fi, which requires the wiring and the new access points. So I need direction from the board on whether you want to have a capital project to go after what is a large project.
Yeah. So, you know, the story of the rabbinic news about the work you did at the, the two refuse and recycling sites, and then with the Lee Chait Pond, that one's obviously a very easy sell to the public. And I think we're all pretty adept at explaining to people that the capital expenditure, at least for the refuse and recycling was, on the front end, was basically recovered in the first year of, under the new, the new operation and organization of those sites. Here, roughly, we're talking about a 10-year recovery period if we're looking at $30,000, $32,000 a year on BrightSpeed charges, which from the first day I was on this board, I was like, cannot believe our phone bills.
And remember, we talked about it. But it's only half that because we still would have a, you know, $10,000, $10,000 to $12,000 cost to replace that 32.
Right, yeah. So, but still, like, if, so I guess my question for you and Ms. Jewell would be, for a capital expenditure like this, and I know you were in a larger locality before, just in guiding us from a local government capital expenditure standpoint, if we go $334,000 plus $14,000 in recurring charges, and we're, we're putting, let's just say that's where we end up. So it's $140,000 over 10-year periods. So we're, we're soon approaching half a million dollars, and we're basically doing all of that to save $32,000. How do you, how do you measure, how do you measure, just from a common sense and fiscal perspective, when it does make sense to dive in?
The wild card is that it's, it's not just the saved money, it's the, the phone system stops working. And then what are we gonna do?
Right, yeah.
Is the answer, well, we'll just put a VoIP system in. Great. We don't have a network that can support it.
How long does this take?
To implement?
Yeah.
You know, I haven't got into that in great detail. I can tell you that the number of hours that vendor A quoted for the structured cabling of nine buildings was a lot. And more than I thought it probably needed to be, which is probably why vendor B is quite a bit lower. But I mean, it's gonna be months, you know, a couple of months probably. And there's, we would be putting in conduits between buildings, between either ourselves or with, you know, inmate help with the shovel, because there's so much in the ground out here. It's just not an excavator job, you know, it's a shovel job.
But this, presumably this infrastructure then will set us up for the new courthouse, which is...
Right, well, and it would be something, you know, that you don't have to touch this for a very long time. It really modernizes you and gets you ready for a lot of things. Now, this also leverages a lot of other things that aren't talked about here. We currently host our own servers for the financial server, and we have a backup server. And quite frankly, we have no business hosting servers. You know, from power reliability and all the other things. And then if, you know, the wrong thing happens to adjacent buildings and we're in big, big trouble, we host servers in the sheriff's office. And, and having the backbone and network with proper firewall and all that stuff enables us to push those to the cloud where they probably need to be.
So this project's an inevitability.
I believe that is true.
At some point, we will move to this. The question is when?
Right, right.
And, and are you, is there, is there no vendor C?
Well, I mean, I could keep looking. Yeah.
I'm not, I'm, what I'm asking.
So this has all been cooperative contracts, right? Already bid somewhere else and then try to use their pricing here. The other thing to do is try to bid it. The problem is, it's almost design build.
Yeah.
And it's just not something that I can put on paper very well and say, okay, I need your competitive little bid price on this project. And I do feel bad for vendor A invested a lot of time in concept and visiting buildings and all that stuff, but it's just, I mean, half a million dollars, guys.
How does the hardware compare, because the price difference is, network equipment?
It's, you know, you can see it's, well, brands, I mean, vendor B was Cisco stuff and vendor A is something else. Well, they're both top stuff.
Can I ask a high-level question? So if we build a building back out here and then we have someone come do this exact same thing back there, is it smart to do it all at the same time? Is it gonna save money doing that? Can we, can we punt it that far ahead?
I think there, there could be some economies of scale to do this work while you're doing a courthouse. A courthouse is a couple of years' way to start. It's gonna be an 18-month construction project probably, and it's, you're probably a year away from final design. It's a long time away. So there's risk. Now, I would recommend, when we were looking at conduit runs and things, we would try to avoid areas that would be potentially disturbed if these buildings ever went that way. But this fiber connection between these buildings that would serve this, is at least of our worries digging up back there.
But there's no, there's no cost savings.
I think there could be, I think there could be some cost savings because you have captive contractors on site that might be able to do the things. But it also is the disruption all at one time when you're trying to... It's gonna be hard to, because we have this fractured network now, the idea is that we can put in a whole new network parallel and then cut over clean. So, I don't know, it's, it'll be complicated any way we do it.
Yeah, no, it's just, it's a lot of money. Go ahead, sorry.
The courthouse will be a blank slate. It'll be a completely different rollout. They'll, they won't, they won't have any of the intricacies that existing offices already have.
Courthouse is actually a pretty easy building and all this because the state handles the network for the general district clerk's office. And all we need to do is get a couple lines in there for phones and then up here for a network. So really, here's a, a switch cabinet downstairs, and this is one of the easiest buildings. Cameras.
Here's what it says, Gary, it says, "Much of this project can be funded using courthouse security fee dollars." How, how much of this project can be funded?
You know, I think there's, there's a very good question. The reporting that Bonnie just shared with you showed what is collected and reserved. And so those items that are necessary to leverage courthouse security, cameras in the courthouse, around the courthouse, inside, outside, possibly telephones, so the telephone's so cheap in this, wireless access. So I'm not prepared to tell how much, other than we'll use it all.
Okay.
So the balance is this right now, 228. And, or did I hear you correctly in saying that that potentially could all go towards this project?
I think we can find a way to make that work. Yeah. Now, we still use part of this revenue source to pay for court security humans, to the extent they're needed, right, the bailiffs. But there's a lot left over since the state allowed us to double the fee. It's accumulating more, which is great. And we knew that that would really help us do the camera project. And we'll still do that, but then it'll also help us do some of the things that the camera project needs, like the fiber network back and all that stuff. And the cameras on the buildings next to us that are looking at this building and things like that.
So, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but so does vendor B have cameras? Or are they just not as?
They, they, no. They basically said, we'd really rather not provide cameras.
Okay.
So I use vendor's A's price in their column.
Okay, so who would do it?
They will install them. I just, we need to provide them. We're doing the generators at the schools.
Oh, so they're not marking them up? We're buying them and then giving them to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
And probably do some competition there to figure out
I got them.
whether we really need, I would say Cadillac, but I think that's a passe term. It's some other brand.
Not GameCam's.
HD or recorded.
Back to the cloud and that sort of thing. We are not planning on having digital video storage devices here. The modern cameras store a certain amount on the camera and then link to the cloud. We just don't want to be having widgets here that people need to touch on some regular basis because we don't have people.
So if you're really looking at these numbers, 263 by the end of fiscal year 2025, the delta with the 334, you're really talking about $70,000. So with the $20,000 savings on an annual basis, you'd basically recoup that in three or four years.
You can get there, yeah. It's still, it's a big project that I wasn't gonna drive any...
Fuzzy numbers at this point, I'm sure, too.
I didn't want to drive the project any further until the board thought that we wanted to have a, you know, I have great confidence that vendor A is like turnkey, right? If there's something missing, it's on them. Vendor B, I'm not guaranteeing 334, 497. But I can tell you the delta's not the difference between A and B.
Right.
So with the budget would have to be something, you know, like 350 or something like that, with an understanding that we're gonna keep it tight and that we might have to come back.
So what I'm, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just said yes.
So what I'm hearing is that this is an inevitability. We have some money in the courthouse fund to do this. The sooner the better, probably better considering the current infrastructure's being fixed through eBay. And if we decide to do this, we're looking at 70, 80, 90, depending on how accurate that is.
Unrestricted, unrestricted funds.
And that this would essentially happen in FY '25.
This will happen the next year? FY '25, yes. Yes. Current fiscal year, before June 30th would be the goal. Yeah. Now, I did, there's caveat at the bottom. Courthouse security funds, when used for other than humans, is where the sheriff says they need to be spent.
Wow.
And she's already, she started the whole camera project.
Okay.
Right. So I think, you know, I haven't explained all of where we are right now with her, but...
So ostensibly, though, if, if there's support here, then there can be support from the sheriff who wants the cameras.
Yeah.
And we could, we could forge a path forward.
We can get there.
Okay.
Well, and that's a well that will continue to fill every year those fees.
Absolutely.
So, but isn't like we're, we're cleaning it out and it'll never be replenished?
Yeah, it's, what did Bonnie say about, is that $50,000 net a year on top of bailiff fees?
No, that's $50,000 total.
With, yeah.
Remember, the bailiff fees are like $10,000, $15,000 a year.
Till we go to two-quarter.
Hey, we talk about safety and security in the new courthouse. We don't really have any, we noticed, what, last summer when you guys almost got fly-eyed? We didn't have what we needed for that. So there is safety and security issues in my mind today. And waiting four years until we have a new courtroom, I don't, I don't think makes sense if I look at everybody in this building and think we deserve security today. And being able to access it should the sheriff need information, I think is huge. A lot of people have cameras but don't have any way to store the data. My only concern is moving forward, technology changes so rapidly, would it make sense to ask Glavine Homes who their tech company is?
The security people?
Yeah. And just see if there's some way there to try to use, at least similar, so it all works together when we get the new courthouse.
But that I agree with. But that I agree with and um, I, I ran up against that in my last community with access controls, you know, keep five things and. You have a little big contract and it's a, putting something that you don't like and then you got another building, you got two different versions and it's a pain to try to collapse that in.
Yep.
But it's a good conversation to have for sure. Probably very early, but.
Right.
But no, but it is one of those things where after the fact, people are like, why didn't you think about it?
Yeah.
And how much did you spend?
Yeah. But the key point, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the key point is that the, the expenditure, the expenditure of local tax dollars would be relatively minimal. I mean, it's really just coming.
It's mostly fee.
It's mostly fees and, I mean, that's, I think that's a good story. And if you look at the sheriff's social media posts just today, I think the fees are accumulating quite nicely and will continue to do so.
Of course, every time she puts it in an RSW.
Well, I mean, proven, several projects have proven over and over and over that waiting does not save us money.
Mm-mm.
What are you, do you wanna?
He needs a dollar amount, it looks like.
Well, I mean, I would like the board to, I made a, an entered a recommended motion, which is basically to create the capital project that's funded this, you know, but at some amount. Um, we'll have to come back and deal with the budget stuff later.
Okay.
Then I'll, did you wanna go for it?
No.
I'll, I'll make a motion to create a network, modernizing the CCTV. I wanna make, I'm gonna move to create a network modernization telephony capital project with a budget of, oh, this is tricky. Budget of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Do we need a budget? What do we need? Do we need a cap?
How about three hundred and fifty thousand?
Three hundred and fifty thousand, I'll say.
Yep.
Not to exceed.
Not to, not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the understanding that the staff, the staff will continue negotiations in a year. And a later action will be needed to transfer courthouse security fees to the capital project with a supplemental appropriation to complete the project funding.
All second.
Give a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Good work. Mr. Whitson, new commercial activity?
No, no.
Nothing? All right. Board reports recreational facilities authority?
Uh.
Yes. Um, I always start when I have to report in um, Mr. Carney's place, what a great group they are and they are. But I think the most interesting thing to report is they have completed all of their requirements for a depart- department of forestry grant that they, um, won. Um, because they had a big tree planting on uh, back in October, so that completed all of the requirements. Um, they have some big projects before them, but um, they are exploring some fundraising. Um, ideas, like I said, it, this group, I'm convinced can move mountains. Um.
And build fences.
Yeah. November second, they had their last um, observation, dark skies observation night. Yeah, that, the big one was completing their requirements on the grant. Oh, and then fodder stack. Uh, send the dates, or I mean, save the dates are going out. So sometime in April, I did not write that date down. But you all start training now for fodder stack in April.
Try to keep up with her some.
That's right.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Good luck.
I had it, dug on it, now I can't find it. Oh, it is April. All right, uh, thank you for that. Public Safety Committee?
We're meeting tomorrow.
Um, Planning Commission?
Uh, we met, we took on a contractor's yard, which you'll hear uh, that next month. And the um, agricultural and forestal district, which will hear this evening. And we continued to work on the lodging discussion, which hopefully we'll be able to advertise the ordinance revisions to have a public hearing in January at the Planning Commission.
Excellent. Madam Chair, if I could just go back to the Public Safety Committee since Darren's here and um, just to give you a heads up. Um, so I met last, you know, two weeks ago with one of the interested private donors. And he is very eager to get a bottom line number on costs and I believe the cost would be comprised of the units themselves, whatever that total is. Probably add some more. I keep thinking about locations. Um, plus, I think they all have to be hardwired, so we're gonna have to add some fee for an electrician. Or for most, most of them at least. So I really need for that person or people, um, preferably this week, at least. Uh, one page memorandum or summary of where we're going to end, likely end up on total cost.
Okay, I have that prepared for run tomorrow night.
Okay.
And it's obviously editable. The only unknown cost would be any electrical services.
Yeah.
Which is hard to put a blanket number on because it can be different at every location.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but at least we, we can nail down the number on the units themselves. Um, right.
Yes, sir. I also reached out and got a, um, currently we have forty-five AEDs in the county. Um, that are through life pack, physio control. Um, that includes majority seventeen, which are the sheriff's office. Does include all the ones that are currently in fire and rescue services as well and the schools. And I think we, one of the things that we need to look at is uh, some type of. To be proactive, some type of replacement plan over the next five to ten years. Some of those units are three times their recommended service life.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So it'd be good to look at it from a holistic approach of taking care of everything.
Okay, thanks. Congrats on the big win.
Yes.
I'm sorry about the Michigan flag. That wasn't right.
Which part?
No, I mean, you had the right to stake the flag.
My notes on fodder stack say April twelfth, so just hopefully that's right. Uh, Fire Lovey Board?
We did not meet. But the body does need to meet.
Body needs to meet.
To talk about guideline changes and the capital and so. Uh, need to get Mr. Stinner to get that figured out.
I will send Pete an email.
All right, um, reports, we all just look at cash.
Um, this time of year, it's, it's hard to really look at where you are on cash. It's a function of how fast it's coming in before the deadline, after the deadline. Uh, the dot will be much more meaningful, so, which deadline being December fifth, which is very close to December second.
Good point.
I'm walking over there after those.
Um, meals and lodging, I thought was interesting.
We talked about this last time, uh, that it was down and I um, talked to Bonnie a little bit about it, wondered if it were just, you know, based on the cycle of when. Uh, things were coming through, but the answer is, uh, it's down. And there are some local vendors who are, who didn't provide, which may mean maybe they were closed or. Gone or it'll be penalties or.
Yeah, I, I sent an email about this. I think, um, if I remember correctly, the journal said there were eight vendors here last year that are on the issue. And year-over-year, it's just down.
Yep.
So it's something we need to keep an eye on. And there were a few that were late payers. Of course, if they pay, that money will come in, but that wasn't a significant amount of the year-over-year decrease.
Which is interesting on top of the last quarter when it was higher. So definitely everything we need to keep looking at as we move into budget season.
Anything else you all would like to look at?
The conversation that was had earlier, uh, relative to the audit and the fund balance reservations, um, as a twenty twenty-four are attached. So that was attached today, I think after the final information. And Mr. Roller referred to this note twenty-six. Uh, but it's a good one for board members to dig into when you get to it, page ninety-two, and then Bonnie's added some details on. What the board has designated certain fund balance for, what fund balance is restricted because of the way the revenue comes in, like courthouse security, for example.
Which is.
Is on here. You, that two hundred thirteen thousand, seven hundred twelve is in your fund balance, but you can only use it for courthouse security, right?
Good information.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about that? Um, for how long has that balance been accruing without?
What's, what's that?
The courthouse.
Well, it's been occurring since the fees were put in place. But it was, it's now twenty dollars per case or whatever. It used to be ten. And so I think just with court traffic and doubling it, it now exceeds what it costs for the bailiff by enough that it's really starting to pile up. Whereas before, um, the only thing we have charged against it, against it since I've been here is that bailiff cost.
So do, do we, do we know generally, historically, how, how much that is gonna, over the past couple of years, how, what the ref- refresh rate is like is on that, on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's about fifty thousand dollars a year. And then from that, fifty thousand dollars, we paid ten, fifteen thousand dollars in bailiff costs.
I got it, I got it. If you go back three years, it, it was half.
Okay.
That revenue.
Oh, right, 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 right.
And, or maybe less because maybe court traffic was different. And then the COVID year screwed things up with court fees and when, we weren't really doing court that much.
Yeah.
Well, we can go to legal matters if you're.
Yeah, a whole lot of, nothing changed, um, here right now, so, um. I think literally nothing changed. Waiting for the Supreme Court to, to tell us something. About the Flint Hill case, which I'm hearing February maybe. Is the next cycle when it would possibly be included. If it's not, then it would be whatever their next cycle is. Uh, that second case has never been served, so it's just kind of placeholder. The ownership is still hanging out in federal court. They haven't taken, made a ruling yet, so. Not sure why that's taken so long. Interesting. And then on the manner, best I understand, it's not been set for hearing yet, so just kinda hanging out.
You said Comcast rates went up?
Yes, so the Comcast notifications, this is something citizens, I'm sure will get alerted to, but um. There's, they submitted a ton of information here on rates and old and new things. They're breaking different pro- packages apart and. Just overall, the packages are going up. Like, I think they just give you enough numbers that your eyes glaze over and you say, okay, it's gone up. I don't, I don't know.
Yep.
Here's just limited basic cable, five bucks.
All right.
I don't know how it could possibly go so expensive already.
And VDOT, there wasn't anything?
No, just a normal monthly report. Um, we, there was some communication, um, Supervisor Smith had with Mr. Nesbit about the Sperryville project. Of course, they had a little delay because of the design grade of the inlet need to be tweaked. They fixed that and then when they went to de-keeping. This merger you may have read about between a couple of local asphalt companies caused some issues because that was their on-call contractor, but now it's, the whole contract's being reviewed by whoever. For competitive reasons and so their on-call paving company has not been able to.
Get it over the finish line? There was a hurricane in the mix somewhere in there, too.
Yeah.
Weather delays, a new company had to be vetted, um, you know, different things at play. And it's, uh, it's unfortunate because uh, that, that project is still unfinished, but VDOT assures us that they will get to it as early as they are able to schedule a paver to come in and finish the job.
Um, okay, we're into matters presented by the board. Mr. Carney?
I do not have anything.
Mr. Whitson?
Nothing, just I, I already talked about the AED project. I'm excited about it and I think it's gonna be great for our county. Um, we've already seen one sudden cardiac arrest in like the last, you know, four or five months. And it just shows that it happens and um, I appreciate Darren's work on, on the details of it. And I know that the private donors who will be supporting it significantly are really thrilled about it, so. Hopefully we can um, take advantage of some of Catwater students at the school. I know my own children wanna help out, um, just getting them. Out and on site at different places around the county when everything's ready to go.
Community focused, that'd be awesome.
Very, very cool thing.
Ms. Smith?
I, uh, read with great interest the article, I think Ms. Shanahan wrote it in the newspaper, about the ability. Of the Culpeper Board of Supervisors to uh, leverage an addendum to their broadband agreement with Allpoint's broadband. That reduces their subscribers, their prospective subscribers rate by fifty percent for each month. That Allpoint exceeds the, the anticipated project period. So if the project goes over deadline by six months, then the subscriber would receive a discount for six months. A fifty percent discount on their um, broadband pricing. And I do know that we are waiting for the Regional Commission to call a meeting, um, but I do wonder if it's not. Um, a, a good time for us as a county, knowing we've been the tip of the spear so often on the broadband agreement. To um, to coordinate with Culpeper County and review their agreement and the addendum that they were able to um, have all parties sign. And see if it's not something that we can also do for our county and subscribers, because I think we all know that. Uh, they're gonna be very challenged to complete this project at their original timeline. And um, good things should come to those who wait. So um, I, and I hope if there's an interest to do this, and of course the broadband authority can take this up. I don't believe we have to have outside counsel to do this if we have um, a template from another county and work through the authority. I don't think Rappahannock County should foot the bill for all of the subscribers in the NSVRC area. To experience a fifty percent discount on their bill. I think, um, I think we should have everyone chip in, ask staff to look at it and get it done. I think it was a really great report and thank the newspaper for calling it to our attention.
I'm sure with them being part of just a single entity, it makes it less complicated, but.
Yeah.
Well, it also makes it a lot less money. I think it was a eight million dollar chip in and ours is a ninety-eight million dollar chip in. So hopefully, uh, that gives us a little more leeway.
I think it's, um, you know, certainly worthwhile to share with the other communities, see if we can get some traction. I, I do wanna report that on Friday, I did get an email from the Regional Commission saying that. The approval for the re-scooping or whatever was approved by DHCD last Friday and they are actively trying to schedule the next meeting. That they've been waiting for DHCD to do that. Um, so I will, hopefully they'll find something. A date and then we'll, and they also reiterated their willingness to have APB's willingness to come before the bodies. So that may be an opportunity for January.
APB said that?
NSVRC said APB was willing to do that.
Well, that's in the monthly report, is that they intend to continue to engage in a more.
Direct to email only to me.
Okay, well, when can we get him here?
January?
Yeah, I guess.
Like, I, I would like him to be right there.
Yeah.
I don't know who him is gonna be, but.
I don't care.
I do, for real.
Yeah. I went to Richmond and sat right across from him and, yeah.
Yep.
It, it helps.
If they can set up representative.
Those are the things they look forward to.
I would be, I would be all for that.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I agree.
January.
January. It's a new year.
Anyway, thanks for raising that.
Yeah, I think it would be a great thing.
Yep. Ms. Comer?
I have nothing to say.
My only thing is, and because Darren's in the room and sorry I'm putting you on the spot, but how is the county as far as the new pharmacy guidelines? I know we got, the state, I think, did an extension, but could you give us an update?
Certainly. Um, in regards to the county, we partnered with Sperryville and Flint Hill. It's worse that we've done a test purchase of both narcotics and uh, conventional schedule six medications.
The test purchase after being properly certified.
Yes, yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, because there's so many, there's so many checks and balances. We wanted to make sure everything's going through. Um, the hospital has extended, Fogier Hospital extended their um, provision until January thirty-first. I know some other counties are still struggling to, to get caught up. Um, speaking with the other chiefs, uh, as recently as two weeks ago, everybody was set, I think one was still waiting for a.
one was still waiting for DEA, um, inspection, but all the paperwork is in, we're just waiting for it to go through the processes. So we should be okay. When I met with the pharmacist from Falkir just before Thanksgiving, I told him we planned to come off in, in, in January and we should go, be able to move forward without a hitch.
Awesome. I do want to say thank you very much and congratulations. When we were at Homestead with VACO, I sat in a room of probably fifty unhappy county supervisors and administrators because they felt like this was being shoved down their throats. I know it was not and, you know, they're dealing with it, but, um, you guys, you have done a phenomenal job to put us at one of the counties that's ready to roll.
One of the nice things about being small is that we can still be agile. It makes it a lot simpler, um, and it's not just me, obviously they did the same thing at Washington, they've done the same thing at Amos Hill as well. But now very pleased with all the efforts. We've all shared, um, our, our successes and our failures, uh, through this process, but I think the, the end of it's, we're, we're going to be set in January.
That's great.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Darren.
All right.
And we would have been set November twenty-sixth if we had to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice job. All right, recess until seven?